Welcome, everyone, to our April 23rd City Council meeting. I hope you all had a fun, fun Easter weekend with your family and friends. Hope you found a lot of eggs and I hope you ate an appropriate amount of candy, right? And so we will begin today's City Council with roll call, please. The City Clerk.
Captain Gomez. Garcia. Gonzalez.
Present.
Hernandez.
Present.
Hurst.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Estrada.
Here. Thank you. Moving on to Item 2, Consent Agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion. The mayor will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. And at this moment, I would like to invite the public to provide any input on any item on the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, I will ask for a motion from my peers. We have a mo—
I have a question on an item that's on here.
Yes.
Item number B for the resolution. The report reads Rodriguez Street from Main Street to Riverside, but what part of Rodriguez is this? I didn't see it in the plan. I wasn't quite sure. If you can clarify what section Rodriguez is on this for me, please.
Welcome Director Palmasano.
Yeah, because Main Street Rodriguez is two sects and I don't know—
Correct. So I—if you—and I apologize, the map in this staff report was a little bit different than this one. Rodriguez Street—uh, let's see, do I have a pointer here?
Okay.
Pardon me? Oh, can't do a pointer? Okay.
Where the church is?
Yeah, where the churches—
Yes, actually, so the Rodriguez Street does tee into Main Street over past St. Patrick's Church, and then Rodriguez Street actually continues on as you go past the Metro Center, and it does intersect with Riverside Drive.
So the whole parallel length?
Yes, the whole length of Rodriguez Street.
Okay. Thank you, yeah, because I wasn't clear on the map.
Yeah, I apologize for that, that was a—
Thank you.
Any other comments or—Councilman Hurst?
I'd just like to thank staff for thinking of Roach Road and the sanitary sewer replacement. You know, that's an area of town that sometimes is easily forgotten except by the residents there and those who use that street to cut through to avoid the traffic and other congested areas. So I'm glad that we'll—they'll be getting some physical improvements and hope everything flows well.
Well said, yes.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Yes.
Can we ask staff why we don't have the check warrants in our consent agenda? We haven't seen them for the last three council meetings, I think.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I can provide an update to council on that. It's been a change in the way we're processing checks and payments, trying to streamline the work for staff as well. The process we'd been using previously of bringing the check warrants as part of the council meeting was actually slowing down our ability to make those payments, and I could provide more background of the council on that offline as well.
Because my understanding is the warrants were checks that were already cut, so there wasn't anything—it should've been in hindsight after they've left the building.
Yeah, I could bring more detail to the council as to the changes that were made, and really the spirit behind them was to try to streamline our payment procedures.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments by council? Okay, seeing none, if I can get a motion. We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Garcia, seconded by Councilman Hernandez. The City Clerk, when you're ready.
Captain Gomez.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hurst.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Estrada.
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to Item 3, Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. As there were none, we will move on to Item 4, New Business. And we will begin with Item 4A, Consideration of Contract with Corolo Engineers Incorporated to Develop a Water Master Plan in an Amount Not to Exceed $411,981 in Authorizing Budget Appropriation from the Water Enterprise Fund in the Same Amount. Whenever you're ready, Director Palmasano, welcome.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, council, mayor. Before we begin, we thought we would start this presentation with an overview of our water system since we have a number of new council members, and we'd like to just explain to you what our water system is, how it works, and some of the main components of it. So next to me here is Bo Kaiser. He's our Water Operations Supervisor, and he's going to provide you with an overview of our water system to start out with.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. As Steve mentioned, my name is Bo Kaiser. I'm the Water Operations Supervisor for the city. So I'd like to—I know some of you are familiar with how our water system is designed and set up, but for those that aren't, I'll just give you a brief overview. The map that we've got displayed here is a representation of our water service area. What you'll notice is that it does extend beyond the limits of the city of Watsonville. We actually go out towards the coast to the community of Pajaro Dunes and inland towards Freedom and up to the community of Coralitos. We provide water to about 65,000 customers every day, and what you'll see in the map are different colors, and those colors represent pressure zones in our system. So while it is one entire system, each of those zones, in essence, are their own water service area, and they're divided that reason—for the reason of topography and elevation. The pressures necessitate the need for separation there. So we can convey water from top to bottom, but generally speaking, water stays within those zones. Now, we are fortunate, I think, with the city of Watsonville that we have a pretty diverse water portfolio. We have both groundwater and surface water sources. We also have abundant storage capacity throughout the system, and we have numerous pump and booster stations that are set up in each of those zones to move that water around. Our groundwater accounts for about 90% of our annual water production. We have 14 wells that are pumping that water out of the ground, and on average, they produce between six and seven million gallons a day. Now, while our wells produce a lot of water, they are also getting older every day, and the average age of our wells is just about 50 years. To note, our oldest well was drilled in 1927. Along with our groundwater supply, we have a surface water supply, and that is out in Coralitos. We have a surface water treatment plant that takes water from the Coralitos watershed. That water is solely dependent on the prior—or the operation of the plant is dependent solely on the previous year's rain. So in a good year, we produce about 10% of our annual water production. In a drier year, we produce less, and in fact, in the years 2014 and 15, we produced zero. Those were the drought years, if you can recall. So climate change does impact our water system. I mentioned that we have storage. We have eight significantly sized reservoirs with a capacity of about 12 million gallons. So on any given day, we've got that storage available to us. It's treated water. It's available for high-demand days. It's available to maintain pressures in the service areas. It's also our insurance. In the event of an emergency such as a fire, we've got adequate fire flow protection with that storage capacity. In addition, we have our pumps and our booster stations, and I like to consider those the heart of our system because they are the ones pushing that water out there for us alongside with the wells, but those are running almost all the time, and they are providing the pressure, which is what all of our customers demand. In the event of a main line break, which happens unfortunately, or a fire hydrant gets knocked over, we do not need—to—we do not want to see a loss of—or an interruption to service in the system, and those pumps and booster stations provide that backup for us when we need it. Now, I'm proud to say that our water supply and our reliability and our quality is strong. I feel very good about that. We continue to meet all of the drinking water quality regulations that put forth by the state of California, the Department of Water Resources, and the federal EPA. Every year, the Water Department publishes our water quality report, and that summarizes all of the water sampling and analyses that were done during the previous calendar year, and that is available on the city's website. Actually, going back to the year 2000, I think we have all those reports there, so. Now, it does take a lot of work to get that water moving around out there, as you've seen, and the way we do that is through our network of distribution mains. Like our wells, our main lines are also old. Over half the lines are over 50 years old and will need to be replaced at some point. They eventually do reach the end of their useful life, and the city's taken a proactive approach to do that. We have an ambitious main line replacement program that's been implemented over the past few years, and I—of the 170 miles of pipeline, we tried to put in about two miles of new pipe a year, which is a very good progress, I believe. In addition to our main line, we are also challenged with water quality issues that are presented to us. Most recently, we had the issue of chromium 6 come up, and as most of you have been educated on over the years, I won't go into any more detail on that, but to say that the state has still not made their final decision on where that regulation is going to settle. But I will tell you that when they do, we have done enough preparation and study and planning for it that whatever that level is determined to be, we will be prepared to meet that if that's the case that is needed. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Director Palmasano.
All right. Thank you, Bo. Very nice. And no discussion of our water system would be complete without addressing the groundwater basin and our overdraft situation. So many of you may know that we are considered—a groundwater basin is considered to be in overdraft, and the reason is we take more out of the groundwater basin that is—then is recharged back into it naturally through rainfall each year. And you can see on this map, the city of Watsonville is in the center of it and our water distribution system, and the red line is the kind of boundary of our groundwater system. So one of the results of overdraft along the coast is that we have seawater intrusion where salty water migrates in underground and can contaminate wells, making them too salty to be used. So the good news around this is that through the work of the city in collaboration with Pajaro Valley Water Management Agency, it appears that that seawater intrusion barrier or boundary has sort of stopped and is stabilizing and actually in some years is moving back towards the coast. So you can see on this map, the city of Watsonville is quite a ways away from the seawater line boundary, and so the community is actually in very good shape, knowing that the boundary, the seawater intrusion level has basically been neutralized right now, and it will very unlikely reach our wells in a very, very long time. One thing to note about groundwater use in the valley is that the city inside city limits uses about 8% of the groundwater. Other urban uses in the community make up another 9%, but 83% of our water is used by agriculture for irrigation. And the city has for probably 15 years now been working in partnership with PVWMA to address the groundwater situation. The main component of the project so far has been the recycle water facility, which the city owns, and then sells the water to Pajaro Valley Water Management Agency to distribute for agricultural irrigation, especially along the coast where there is that seawater intrusion, and that has made a tremendous difference for balancing the basin. In addition to that, we have extensive water conservation programs that have been going on for over 20 years and have been very successful. I'll tell you a little bit more about that. And also, as Bo mentioned, we utilize our Coralitos filter plant water as much as possible to reduce the burden on the groundwater basin. So our water conservation efforts of recent years, we've really been focusing on landscape water conservation because that's the next big area of conservation savings that we can find, and we really want our customers to save water, use less water, and so we have programs for free landscape audits for businesses and residents to help them reduce water use outside. We have rebate programs to encourage planting of drought-tolerant landscapes, and then on occasion, we do have to-do enforcement. We really try to use education first, but we also do enforcement for water waste at times to get people in compliance. We also have a number of programs in terms of rebates for low-flow toilets, low-flow washing machines as well, so—and a very robust public education program that has been going on for a long time. And the results of all of that effort over the last 20 years is quite significant. So the state, some years ago, set water conservation targets for the year 2020, and the goal for California in general is 155 gallons per person per day. For the central coast, because we have a more mild climate, we're even more restrictive with 117 gallons per person per day, and we're very excited and proud to report that we are almost half of the state goal at 59 gallons per person per day in 2018. So our efforts have paid off, and we're in great standing with the state in terms of our water conservation efforts, so. So that's sort of the overview of our water system, and now I wanted to shift gears to the actual item before you tonight for your consideration, which is approval of a contract to do a water system master plan. So I wanted to briefly overview. The goal of the master plan is to evaluate the condition of our water infrastructure system, so looking at our wells, our pump stations, our reservoirs, and other types of infrastructure that we use to deliver this safe, clean water to our community. In addition to that, we've been working on some computer modeling and analysis that will also feed into the master planning effort that will help us identify where in our water system we may need to make some adjustments in terms of better reliability, better efficiency of the overall pumping system, that kind of thing, where we might need water in the future, and so we're going to talk about that a little bit tonight. So this master plan—we haven't done one in probably 25—I think at least 25 years, and this one we're doing now will go out 20 years, looking at what do we need to replace, what do we need to anticipate replacing, so we can start planning financially especially how to pay for all of that. Also, what are some of the new, more effective technologies we could be using to lower costs or improve reliability? What are regulations that might be coming down towards us that we need to be prepared for? How do we create a water system that's more flexible so we are able to respond to new regulations by the state, all of these things? And last but not least, how much will these projects and improvements cost? So the way to answer those questions, the—in our mind is, you know, we have our staff and we know our water system very, very well, but we are proposing to bring in a consultant because they actually work with hundreds, if not thousands, of water agencies and organizations across the state and the country, and they have exposure, the global view of what are the new technologies, what are the best management and operational practices we can be using, and so they're going to help us look at all of that so we can have the best, most efficient water system possible. So you may have noticed, we've been doing a lot of master planning this year. We had before you in December 2018, a wastewater system master plan, and that work is underway, and we're making great progress on that one. We actually started the water system hydraulic model this past fall, and you'll hear a little bit more about that tonight. We began the MSC master plan process earlier in the spring of this year to look at our needs for facilities for our solid waste division in particular, but also water services, parks, and everybody who's stationed at MSC. And so tonight, we have our water system master plan, and all of these are intentionally kind of happening now in anticipation of an upcoming rate study that will begin this fall, and will be coming back to council early in—early next spring to help us figure out what are the infrastructure needs we have and how will we pay for this over time. The rate study will be for five years, but these master plans are all more like 20-year timelines, but it sets the stage for us to really get a handle on what do we need to do to take care of and maintain properly our water, wastewater, and solid waste infrastructure. So with that, I would like to turn the presentation over to Elaine Simmons with Corolo Engineers, and she is a very knowledgeable person that we have been working with on the hydraulic model piece, so she's going to start out with that and tell you about what that is and why it's important, and then get into the master plan work. So go ahead, Elaine.
All right, thank you, Steve. Good afternoon, Mayor Estrada, council members, city staff. I'm Elaine Simmons with Corolo Engineers, and I'm here to present some more details about the current hydraulic model project that we are working on, as well as the proposed master plan. So first of all, what is a hydraulic model? It is a computerized representation of the water system, so it includes all of the components that Bo outlined earlier, including the supply sources, the surface water diversions and wells, the storage and pumping facilities, as well as the distribution system or the piping network. So when we go about to create this hydraulic model, you'll see on the bottom-left image here that we start with gathering all of the background data associated with the facilities. Here, you see three of the largest pressure zones within the city, and you see the number of wells and the tanks and pumps associated with each of those facilities at the pressure that they are operating at. We take that information and we put it into this computerized system using the city's existing geographical information systems, GIS database. And so in that GIS database, there is also a lot more detail associated with pipe diameters, pump capacities, volume of storage, and all of that gets translated into this system. The benefits of a hydraulic model are that it allows for analysis of the system hydraulic behavior. So for example, it allows us to test various operational scenarios before implementing them in the field. For example, if we wanted to modify a pressure set point. It allows us to identify ways to optimize the existing system. For example, if we wanted to optimize a storage level in the reservoir. And it also allows us to plan for future project needs, such as if we need to change a pipe size. So for the current hydraulic modeling project, Corolo Engineers took the following steps in our approach, and steps one through three are already completed. We're about 70% of the way through the project. So we started by constructing a new model using the city's GIS database, as well as background information, including as-built drawings and operation manuals. We also collected numerous field and historical operational data, and all of this data then was input into the model, and we calibrated the new model by comparing the model results to the collected data. So the step that we are currently in progress for is number four. We are evaluating the existing system capacity, and we will next develop improvement recommendations, as well as review the findings with the city and prepare the technical memorandum. So next, I'm going to switch gears and talk about the proposed master plan process, and specifically some details as far as how we propose to do that work. So the master planning process provides a roadmap for the city to achieve its city goals, and so that would be to answer those questions that Steve had previously identified. So specifically, to understand the state of facilities on the bottom left, we propose doing a condition assessment and seismic evaluation of the key facilities in the water system. And I'll provide some more detail about what that entails in a bit. And to answer what the future facility needs are, we propose additional modeling analysis and also to come up with what recommended projects would come out of that. In order to understand the cost of potential repairs, we propose doing planning-level project cost estimates, and then to understand how to fund these potential repairs, we propose a capital improvements program planning process. So our master planning process steps really are two parallel tracks. So we would start with a 20-year planning criteria, and out of that, the condition assessment and seismic evaluation track would start by looking at what the existing system deficiencies are through the condition assessment, and then we would address what the future needs of those facilities are, and then come up with particular alternatives, and then evaluate those alternatives in order to develop recommended projects. Simultaneously, through the model evaluation, we would use the developed hydraulic model from the current project, as well as the existing system deficiencies, and we would then identify what the future needs for your facilities are before we come up with recommended projects. So together, these recommended projects would be looked at holistically and collated together into a CIP process that would be then documented in this report. And so the benefit of having that documentation is also that if you wanted to go for any funding opportunities, this would be in a volume for you. So the proposed scope of work starts with the tasks that are outlined in the left-hand column, as well as the critical or significant facilities that are proposed. So for the condition assessment, we're proposing to look at the following facilities: your key pump stations, steel tanks, earthen reservoirs, wells, and bridge pipes. And the benefit of that would be to understand what the remaining life of these assets are from a multidisciplinary approach. So by multidisciplinary, we would be looking at it from a structural, mechanical, electrical, instrumentation, engineering approach. The seismic evaluation, we would be looking at two of the pump stations and four of the steel tanks in order to understand their seismic vulnerability, and this evaluation is really a computer-based evaluation, coupled with the visual assessment that we would see in the field. The hydraulic model analysis, we previously discussed, encompasses all of these city facilities, and that's a tool to confirm existing capacity and plan for the future needs. And then finally, we would be preparing the recommendations, costs, and the CIP for all of the recommended facility improvements, and these would be prioritized based on a criticality of the needs. And so the CIP would look at phasing by near term, which would be zero to five years, midterm, which would be five to 12 years, and long-term, 12- to 20-year planning horizon. So drilling down into a little bit more detail of what the condition assessment and seismic evaluation entails, the—for building—buildings, we would look at any wall cracks, the way that the building was designed and constructed. We would look at mechanical equipment, including your pumps and your wells, your standby generators. We would be evaluating the seismic vulnerability. And then we would also be looking at the electrical and instrumentation controls system, so that would include the power distribution system coming into each of those facilities, as well as the computerized SCADA and PLC network system. So our approach would be to do a site visit of each of those facilities, to interview operations and maintenance staff, as well as perform our visual assessment, and then we would evaluate the condition to estimate the remaining useful life and the seismic vulnerability. And then we would develop recommendations for the rehabilitation or replacement, followed by estimating the cost and recommendations, and then developing the CIP, and then finally reviewing the findings with the city and preparing a report. And then in the parallel track for the hydraulic modeling future project, our approach would be to use that developed model to evaluate the system capacity based on the projected future water needs over the 20-year planning horizon. And then we would also take the similar steps of developing recommendations, costs, and then reviewing those findings and preparing the report. Some of the facilities that we would be looking at through that modeling effort could include what the future storage needs and capacities would need to be. It could look at the main replacement goals that Bo just mentioned and make sure that those sizes are adequate for the future needs, as well as the mechanical equipment and the capacity of those. So the proposed schedule is that we are looking at about six months in duration. As you can see in the red milestone markers on the top, we have regular check-in meetings proposed with the staff, and then the bulk of the recommendations are planned to be completed by the fall of this year in order to feed into the proposed rate study project that Steve mentioned. And we do anticipate that the final report would be submitted in October of 2019. So with that, I will open this up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by my colleagues? Councilwoman Garcia?
I have one question for Bill and one for Ms. Simmons. You mentioned in terms of that the city is meeting our quality water standards, and yet you— yet you also mentioned the issue with the chromium 6. And so my confusion is, is how are we meeting those standards with the problem of the chromium 6?
Yes, that's a good question, and it is confusing. Presently, there is no regulation on chromium 6. It's been spoken of, and at one point, they almost established one, but they have not determined what that level is going to be. So as it stands now, on the books, we are meeting all of the water quality standards set forth. That could change when the state comes out with their determination, but that, we do not know when that's going to be. It was supposed to be about 18 months, and that passed about six months ago, I think. So we're still waiting for their determination. But right now, we meet, the federal level for chromium 6 actually is twice as high as the state of California as it is. And where the present level for chromium 6 in California, we are 20% of that, roughly.
And then my question is, in terms of the list of main tasks and scope of work, number 10 states, "Develop unindirectional flushing pilot program." What is that?
That is a good question. And so that is part of the modeling component, whereas typical maintenance duties, there would be proposed flushing. And one way to help with water conservation is to be able to flush those pipes in a unidirectional way. And so the model component will help us identify what, how best to be efficient with that.
And so we would be able to change the flushing, or I'm not clear still? Would there be flushing for our toilets, or flushing for?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's for, yeah, it's related with the piping network.
Piping, okay.
Yeah, so it's the routine maintenance program that the city staff would be doing.
Well, this is an example. In 2010, when I was first elected, my first orientation was with the water system here. I had no idea of the complexity it takes. As a layperson, I just turn the faucet, and the water comes out. I didn't, so I, so I thank you very, very much for all you do to make sure that I can turn on the faucet and flush the toilet and take a shower.
You have any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Garcia?
Yeah. Down here in the end.
All right, Councilwoman Parker?
Using this time to educate myself. Thank you, Steve. Okay. So just one quick question on the one through 12 list that we have here is the hazard and vulnerability identification. That just sounded too interesting for me not to ask a question about. What does that mean? What would that, a few examples of that?
Sure. So I would say that the primary hazard that we would be looking at is seismic vulnerability. But in addition, some of the water facilities may be prone to flooding, especially those in the coastal regions. So we would be looking at where those facilities are in relation to those hazards, and map them, and also make sure that the recommendations would be mindful of what those potential needs would be.
For instance, with the flooding, you're talking about if, you're not talking about seawater coming back in, or, you know, if we had flooding from the coast? Are you talking about flooding like on the levee system in some of those areas, and the water would not be able to be backed up like it's supposed to because that pumping system or whatever would be overwhelmed? Is that what you're talking about?
So from flooding, it could be riverine flooding. It could be coastal flooding. It could be potential climate change issues of sea level rise and how that impacts the current facilities. So yes, we would be looking at how any of those hazards could potentially impact your facilities.
And then a quick question to Bill or Beau? Beau, okay. Beau, you talked about every year, how many miles of replacement do we do?
Well, the goal is to do two miles of placement. And Steve Hernandez, who oversees the Water Services Division, would have the better number for you. Steve might know, but I think they've achieved about a mile and a half last year, or maybe a mile and three-quarters was their.
Is this the same thing? I was talking to our IT gentleman, and he developed an algorithm?
Yes.
To help support that?
It could be if you were talking to Rex Boyes, they developed a matrix, yes, where they basically were able to prioritize the hotspots by looking at pipe age, pipe material, number of leaks that have already occurred in that area, soils, conditions, kind of throw it all in a pot, and the ones that seem to have more, that ranked higher, rise to the top, and it's, that's the area that we want to address next.
So it's kind of like the Golden Gate Bridge, once you start painting, and then you're done, and then you're going to start painting again?
I think you could, yeah, that's a good analogy.
Yeah, okay. And how long until all of them are?
Well, it's 170 miles, and two miles is very ambitious, but achievable, so that's, what?
I may not be here to see the end of this project.
I don't know that any of us will be, but the system will be in better condition than it was.
Okay, thank you. And that algorithm, that was, that was the coolest thing I'd ever heard of as an application.
No, that was, and that was developed by city staff.
Yeah, that was amazing. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hearst?
I just want to make sure that we've covered that seismic portion well, because that's one of the real risks that we face with bridges and underground pipes as well. We're going to be looking at that very closely and seeing what's vulnerable and what we can do to shore up weak spots and make sure that we're at least aware of those potential seismic disruption hazards.
Yes, that's correct. So the facilities that have been identified are the ones that are probably built before the seismic code, you know, 15, 20 years ago. And so we are going to be looking at that very carefully and coming up with recommendations to improve them as necessary.
Thank you very much. We're coming up on the anniversary of the earthquake pretty soon, and we'll be looking for memories and future things to look out for in that department. I want to thank Beau for his long service to the city. He's, he's been here a long time, and he's made sure that everything flows all the way from, and people forget that our water system goes all the way up into Coraletos to Allen Lane, in fact, on the far outskirts of Coraletos, all the way out to Sunset Beach. So that's a lot, that's a lot of, a lot of miles of pipe. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Okay. A few questions. Energy-wise, are you going to be looking at how we can better facilitate our, because our pumps utilize a lot of energy? And are we going to be able to use solar to help them out for the future, and, or are they already being powered by solar?
They are not being powered by solar now, and individually, I don't know that there is a solar-only solution yet that would operate one of our wells, for example. Now, we do use variable frequency drives that are more energy-efficient, and we do try to pump during times of the day when energy costs are lower. We are always looking for ways to improve our energy efficiency, but as far as solar, I have not come across yet an application where we could be, say, strictly solar to
Well, hopefully in the future.
I hope so.
This is going to continue on beyond my time, so something will be in the plan. On seismic, just to say it really quick, I know we have old pipes and an old system, and I hope we are installing seismic fittings in the appropriate locations now, right? When we do these upgrades?
We're looking into that, but currently, I don't believe we actually have been installing them yet because there's kind of issues with them that we're still figuring out how to deal with. So there's some expansion and contraction issues that also can contribute to leaking. So our staff is, has been looking into it because we have been exploring that option, but it hasn't really been part of our current effort of late, but it is something we're looking into.
Yeah, you should look into it, because I mean, I know up in the Palo Alto area, I've installed a few of them out there when I, when I worked in the industry, so, and they are kind of tricky to install.
Right, so.
And so, but they are important because they do, they do give you a little bit of leeway for.
Right. We do have them on our bridges, so, which is, some of our main lines are very vulnerable to seismic activity because of that, so.
And our reservoir tanks, right?
We do a lot of seismic restraints, and that'll be part of this study as well.
Right, so as part of our condition assessment, we will be evaluating where the needs are from a seismic vulnerability, especially the pipe connection into the tanks. That tends to be a lot of breakage right there, so we will, will be looking at that.
Yeah, yeah, I did a little bit of work that, on that too, installed some in Half Moon Bay. Yeah, they're good, thanks.
Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez?
Thank you. I wanted to make sure I didn't steal anybody's thunder with their questions that they have. You mentioned other urban usages. Would this be commercial usages versus residential? What is urban usage that's other?
Well, we have a lot of, for example, private wells and that are residential or business wells that are outside of the city water system, so that's what that is. And some of those also are, are commercial uses. For example, I think Martinelli has their own well that they sometimes use. So different companies, even within the city limits, have their own wells if they're sort of a big agricultural user. So that's kind of what that other 9% kind of amounts to.
And is there any impact to what you're working on that has to do with the College Lake project that they're looking at, the basin management plan? Because we're looking at more water available there. Is it going to shift anything around with what our bigger picture is going to be for our model for the next 20 years out?
It won't, it won't really affect our city water system model. It's really more of a groundwater basin-wide impact and benefit, the College Lake project. But are you involved in that very much? Do you want to say a little bit about it?
Yeah, from my understanding of the College Lake project, I think that is more looking at the potential reuse of stormwater capture. And so that would be basically what could affect the current distribution system that PV water currently implements. So I think what we are looking at is more addressing what the current demands are in the city, and then looking at what the future needs are, based on things like projected growth in the city, or capacities, remaining useful life.
Well, it seems like we've had such a reduction that even if we're looking at the future, it'll be just going back up a little bit from what kind of reductions we've actually had. So that's good there. Are you going to be looking at alternative rebate programs for the drought tolerant? I know you have the plants, you have the toilets, and you have washing machines, but thinking outside of the box of other programs that might benefit our rebate business model that we currently have?
Yeah, we are always looking at whether, you know, what other agencies are doing, and what are the options? How can we expand our water conservation program? But honestly, the most bang for our buck that we're getting right now is through the landscape conservation program. That is the most sort of, kind of, water use that can be changed and varied by behavior and by better equipment, irrigation, or different plantings. So that, that really is where the most benefit can be gained right now. But some of those other in-home residential kind of use rebate programs, they're okay, but they, they're just kind of expensive, and we actually don't see a significant amount of water savings from those. So we've really been focusing on the landscape of recent.
I think it's the same thing. I mean, I think by now, pretty much, what is it, a good percentage of all the toilets have been done?
Oh, yes.
And we're paying for the next toilet again and again, and I just don't see that we're as resourceful with some of the programs that have been out there for such a long time to help the bigger whole. I'd like to see some other programs, and I've asked to see if there's a possibility that we can do so. So I'm hoping that something gets mentioned in that, in that process there. The financial planning, we've done a pretty good-sized rate assessment a few years back, and we're looking at this tagging on at the end of this particular study to go through that process again, because we're talking, how is this going to affect the rate payer at the cost we're looking at for the CIP on this and the big picture?
Right. So this is all going to feed into a new rate study because, because, believe it or not, that five-year rate study is ending next July.
Okay.
So that's the very end of that series of rate increases. And so, yeah, this is starting all over and doing it again, and we will be very much involving council, meeting with you, and talking about the options. Once we get some kind of conceptual data in place and some conceptual financial models, we'll be coming and meeting with council to get your input, and it'll be a very collaborative process with you, because it's a really big deal.
It is a big deal to the consumers when they're seeing their bills go up, and this is another one we're going to go back and tell them, your rates are changing, based off of what we're finding here. We've had the Senate bills, we've had the water bonds. Are we looking or have the capability of tapping into any of those fiscal resources for moving forward with either this plan and what our plans are? And, I mean, we should see some potential of some funding from, from the water bonds, shouldn't we?
Well, we are absolutely applying. Just last week, I believe we submitted five different grant applications for water bond funding through Integrated Regional Water Management Plan funding, including the Chrome 6 project, you know, which is our big one, also some flood control sheet piling project along the levees. You'll hear about that later tonight, actually. And so, yeah, we are going after as much grant funding as we can get our hands on, and we're applying left and right for those.
I know that you're as resourceful of where we're going to come up with the money as we possibly can. And the other, to sort of tag along with one of the questions on the resources, we, on the energy side of things, Monterey Bay Community Power is something that we really need to overlap on these bigger projects, because these are energy consumption kinds of projects, and they are looking at ways to help communities out with bringing down the cost of that particular resource with maybe planning with them. So I'm hoping that we're, that's one component to piece into this on how we can work together and come up with the best efficiency environmentally as well, with an agency that's here to do so.
Yes, we, we actually have two different consultants we're working with right now to look at opportunities to partner or utilize the Monterey Bay Community Power programs that are coming, the microgrid and the other ones, and looking for some opportunities, because we just did a, an analysis, looking for an opportunity to do solar projects in the city. Unfortunately, because a lot of the funding mechanisms that were available through the federal government are going away, we were looking at like 20- to 25-year payback periods for solar installation projects. But if community power has some way to offset some of those costs, it could actually make it more doable for us. So we're crossing our fingers that something's going to work out to make a more local solar project feasible for us financially, so.
Well, thank you. Those are my questions and comments.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Councilwoman Garcia?
I just wanted to add, in terms of a comment, you mentioned that the landscaping program has been the most beneficial in terms of conservation, and I just wanted to give the other side, as a consumer who took advantage of it, it saves me a lot of money monthly.
That's great to hear. That's what we want also.
Right.
Yeah.
Great. That's very good to hear. I just have one quick question. I took a ride with Jesus at the Water Department, and I was just so impressed how much in the digital age that department is living in, and this plan sounds like it's going to push us even more into the digital age. And I guess my question is just the vulnerabilities of sort of somebody hacking into the system or doing anything to sort of disrupt water flow for the people of Watsonville. So, do you want to say something? Go ahead.
You've got something you can. You go. Well, as far, as far as system vulnerabilities with technology, we, we are aware of that. We very mindful of it. We have people on staff that also are talented in those regards, who help us make sure that we're in front of that and not trying to play catch-up with it. So, but, but technology is a big reason why we are able to manage this system with the size of the staff that we have right now. We have six people in the Water Department, and without, without the technology, we could not do it the way we do now, so.
I totally agree, and I encourage my colleagues to take a ride with somebody at the Water Department. It's just a fascinating, fascinating sort of little trip, but.
Mayor and council, I would just add to that, there was a conversation several meetings back also, as part of our IT priorities, of doing a network security assessment. And we just had a meeting this morning on our capital plan and plan on moving forward with that. And of course, our water operations would be part of that as well, making sure that all of our networks are fully secure.
Great, that's excellent to hear. Thank you. Okay, let me, now I'd like to open it up for any public input or any comment at this time. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to throw it back to my colleagues, Councilman Hernandez.
If no one has any comments, I'd like to move the item A, the consideration of contract with Corillo Engineers to develop a water master plan in the amount not to exceed $411,091. And authorizing budget appropriations from the Water Enterprise Fund in the same amount.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez. Seconded by Councilman Hearst. Before we take a vote, any final questions or comments from?
I know that staff has worked really well with Corillo and I've seen your name frequently or the business name with the basin management plan. So, I know that you're in good hands with the resources and the team that you have to work with, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Hernandez, seconded by Councilman Hearst for a consideration of contract with Corillo Engineers Incorporated to develop a water master plan in the amount not to exceed $411,981. And authorizing budget appropriation from the Water Enterprise Fund in the same amount. Ms. City Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Captain Gomez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Strada?
Yes.
Motion passes. We thank you for your report and your time. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
On this particular item, under A, it reads not to exceed 411,981. And then on Resolution Five, it says 411,300. Can we get what amount is corrected for? Is the resolution going to be no more than the 300 or no more than the 981?
We received a correction and I believe the resolution has the correct amount.
So, 411,300. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kaufman-Gomez. Okay, the council will now move to closed session. Public comments regarding the closed session agenda will only be accepted by the council at this time. So, we welcome any comments or input at this moment. Seeing none, we will now move to closed session and we will be back at 6:30. Welcome everyone back to our 6:30 session of City Council. Muy buenas tardes a todos y gracias por acompañarnos aquí en la junta del concilio. I'd like to welcome everyone to our April 23rd, 2019 City Council meeting. I hope everyone had a great Easter with your friends and your family and your loved ones. And I know Lowell, Lowell probably ate too much chocolate, you know? But it was a good time, right Lowell?
I overdid it on the eggs.
Fantastic. For those who wish to follow along with us tonight, the agendas are out in the front. We have agendas both in English and in Spanish, so feel free to grab, to grab an agenda. For those of you who are interested in Spanish interpretation devices, obtain one from the table by the information booth. Turn it on and make sure it is on channel zero. Hang it around your neck with the front facing out. If you can here, check to make sure the device is on and unobstructed. It only works inside of the chambers and please return it once you have, you're done using it. Para usar los aparatos de traducir en español, obtenga un aparato de la mesa junto a la caseta de traducir. Préndalo y use el canal cero. Cuelgárselo en el cuello con la frente hacia afuera. Y si no puede oír, revise que el aparato esté encendido y sin obstrucciones. Solo funciona dentro de la cámara del concilio. Y por favor, regresen los aparatos cuando terminen. Gracias. We're going to start out with some quick introductions. Please let the people know who you are, what part of the city you represent, or what you do for the city. And we'll start with Councilwoman Parker.
Hi, my name is Ari Parker. I represent District Seven, which starts on Beck Street, comes down Bridge as well as East Lake, goes all the way up to Rogers, out to Martinelli, and encompasses McQuitty School, encompasses Vista Montaña, encompasses our three amazing HOAs out in the senior villages, Bay Village, Paro Vista and Paro Village, and back down the street to Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hearst.
My name is Lowell Hearst and I'm the representative from District Three and the former mayor. I was a retired, I am a retired schoolteacher. I taught agriculture at Watsonville High School for 30 years. And so, I'm glad to have this job continuing. And I represent the area on the west side of Green Valley Road. That's from the Rolling Hills area, Freedom School, Sequoia's almost in it, even though it's in the county. Watsonville Hospital, the Safeway, and Home Depot. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Hearst. Councilman Hernandez?
My name is Felipe, Felipe Hernandez. I represent the District One, which is all of the downtown, actually one block over from downtown, from the Paharo Bridge, all the way up over to Oloney Parkway, to the Target Shopping Center.
Thank you, Councilman Gonzalez.
My name is Aurelio Gonzalez. I represent District Two, which encompasses from Miyukis all the way down to the Commercial Kitchen on Riverside Street. And I go all the way back down to Romo's Auto Dealers. And then I cross back over and I come back up to what is Brennan and Union on Brennan on Fifth Street. I come up on the Watsonville Senior Center. And then I'd make a right on the YMCA. And then I come back up to East Lake Avenue, all the way where the Paharo Valley Prevention New Center is going to be. They're not in my area, but on the other side of Bruington and up to Rogers and Tuttle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez?
Hello, my name is Trina and I am the representative for District Six. My background is in housing. I'm actually a mortgage broker here in town. So, when it comes to lending and understanding loan programs, you get a lot of questions from me to the public and the policy we have here. To give you an idea of where my location is, so that you as a constituent know where to find me or where, whether you're voting for me or not, I cover where the Towers is located, which is where the school district building is located, the old hospital. I go all the way down Freedom Boulevard where you get the Crestview Shopping Center, the Kmart Shopping Center. And I hop over, HA Height is the only school that's in my district. And I get some of the county streets that are down there, the Santa Clara, the San Benito, the Marin Streets, that particular section of the Freedom Boulevard location. And then I hop back over and I have a couple of the President's Streets where part of Madison, the Roosevelt, get in Bruington, Montevista area, a couple of the State Streets, such as Delaware and Virginia and a few of those, that particular pocket over there where the Crestview apartments are located there. So, it gives you some idea of my location. It gives you a little bit of my background and what I really work with on the other council members for policy that I'm fluent with here for the city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Rebecca Garcia, I represent District Five and I'm across the street from Aurelio, Trina, and Paco. Who's it, me? Oh, yeah, and Felipe.
Thank you. My name is Francisco Strada. You can call me Paco. I represent District Four for the city of Watsonville. And that encompasses PV High School, Green Valley, Green Valley Road, Freedom Boulevard, Clifford, and all the way down to Second Harvest Food Bank.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Matt Huffaker and I'm the city manager here for Watsonville. I work for the city council and my responsibilities include implementing their policies and directions and overseeing the operations of the city.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Alan Smith. I'm the city attorney. I advise the council, the city employees, and the city itself on legal matters.
Thank you.
Beatrice Flores, I'm the city clerk.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item six on the agenda. Roll call.
Captain Gomez?
Present.
Garcia?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Present.
Hernandez?
Here.
Hearst?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Strada?
Here. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item seven. If everyone can please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to let one of the students, Josh Shadow, me today, Priscilla, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And whenever you're ready, feel free to start.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. We will now move on to item eight, presentations and oral communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented except that any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked or may ask questions for clarifications. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or refer to staff for clarification. All speakers are asked to fill out a blue card and leave it at the table designated near the podium. Go to the podium and announce your name, your address, in order to obtain an accurate record for the minute. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, city employees. My name's Steve Trujillo. Live in Paharo Village. First of all, I want to compliment the city on recognizing Earth Day and Day of the Children this week. And I want to point out that Arbor Day, which predates Earth Day by more than 50 years, is Friday. I am very pleased to see that the city has been planting trees. Is going to replace some more trees along the Bridge Street median. Thank you, Ari, for that. And the fact that trees are extremely important for the fact that we live in the Paharo Valley. Paharo meaning bird, provides bird habitat, habitat for other creatures, provides shade. And numerous studies that have been done just with a thermometer have shown that cities that have more trees have a cooler temperature. It cools the earth. Why? Because trees breathe out oxygen and they take in carbon dioxide. And God knows we have enough carbon dioxide, not just emanating from the White House, but in the world in general. So, we need to lower the temperature just a few degrees. So, I want to compliment the city for putting up all those healthy trees along Main Street. They are beautiful. And then I want to turn my attention to the fact that Santa Cruz City Council is wrestling with the homeless issue. And just this evening, the Superior Court in Santa Cruz County told the city council they could not close a homeless encampment. And it will now go to another court Friday. Now, what I'm hoping is, is in our infinite wisdom, and I hope there's a lot of that on the city council and among the city manager and the employees of the city, that we will avoid what Santa Cruz has done in that we don't really need any negative publicity about the homeless situation. It is quite apparent that we have one. Just this morning, actually yesterday morning, when I walked my dog along the levee, I counted not one but two people out sleeping under the stars behind the homes on Bronte Avenue on the even side. And I brought to this, to your attention on more than a few occasions, that the homeless issue is truly severe in this city. And I'm very hopeful that the city is going to do everything in its power to provide more low and medium-income housing in the near future. So, the homeless people who are waiting to find something they can afford and who actually work here in town will be able to move into a home. So, I thank you for your efforts on behalf of, well, I won't speak for the homeless people, but I thank you very much for your efforts to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. It's wonderful to see you all. My name is Susan Grolty and I'm the coordinator of Visual and Performing Arts for the Paharo Valley Unified School District. And I'm here with Judy Stabeel, Mr. Stabeel, sorry. Over the past many years, the PVA, the Paharo Valley Arts Center, has helped in, helped PVUSD to resurrect our performing, Visual and Performing Arts program. This year, Judy and the PVA have gone above and beyond with that support. Judy agreed to take on a huge load of an initiative called The Arts Now, showcasing the great work happening in the district, focusing on student success assesses in visual and performing arts. On April 13th, The Arts Now Alliance hosted 180 students, parents, teachers, community members, thank you, Paco, for being there as well, administrators and administrators at EA Hall Middle School. Students performed and told their stories about the importance of art in their lives, while representatives spoke about the importance and the strengths of PVUSD arts education programs. The PVA hosted a reception after, which gave our, which gave out of the area guests a chance to see the incredible vote show happening right now at the PVA. And for anybody who's in this audience, I highly encourage going to the PVA to see that show. It's amazing. Last week, PVA once again helped our teachers hang over 300 pieces of artwork around the civic building in the library courthouses and the fourth floor. This show would not happen without the unwavering support of the PVA for our students. PVA volunteers Judy, Bruce Nicholson, Chris Maroana, Mary Comfort, Jane Gregorius, Mary Neder, Teresa Zoller, Susanna Waddle, Laura Laura, and Rosie Penhallow all helped to hang that show. And it takes hours and what they have to do to get some of those pieces of artwork in is amazing. They are truly community partners who first and foremost are experts in their fields and experts at working with the teachers and the students to show them how to hang artwork professionally. So, for this, PVUSD is very grateful. We thank the city of Watsonville for hosting this fabulous annual exhibit and to recognize the importance of student, showcasing student work in the public environment. We would like to invite the community to join us on May 8th. From 3:00 to 5:00, we'll have... From three to five, we'll have the building open for people to see the artwork and in the courthouse area where you can't normally get into, you'll be able to see the artwork in there, which is always very inspiring. And then we'll have a student reception to follow. So we encourage all of you to join us for that as well. Well, it's always a pleasure working with PVUSD. I want to thank you for your support and invite you on Thursday night to one of the activities here in the Civic Building at six o'clock, where Maria Gitten will share her experiences, her civil rights experiences as part of the vote show. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Watsonville City Council. My name is Tammy Stolzenthaler and I'm with your Public Works and Utilities Department. And I'm here to invite you to our amazing Watsonville Earth Day, Day of the Child. This event will take place this Sunday on April 28th from 12 to four in our beloved City Plaza. We are very proud to say that we're still growing after 17 years of this local event. We are very happy to have 60 organizations and many city divisions getting out there to engage with the public. Six business sponsors have stepped up in order to make this event possible for the community. What's very unique about our festival here in Watsonville is that every organization steps up to provide a free bilingual activity for the youth. And it's one of the only truly bilingual Earth Days that I am aware of in the area. It's our, it's definitely our youth that are the teachers at this event. Over a third of our booths are designed and led by our local students from Watsonville and Paharo Valley High Schools. By the way, a week later is the celebration for the newly restored Connector Trail at Hazelwood Park on Herman Avenue. Join us on May 3rd at 3:30 to 5:15 for the celebration of the new trail to Rolling Hills Middle School. And come and plant a symbolic tree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Bilicich, I live in District Seven. And a couple of things. One, I want to thank the City for their efforts with PV High School. It was great to see that the field is actually going to happen. Some of you were there and it's just nice to have everybody there on a positive note. So, thank you for your support. I also noticed that the county has striped Holahan again, so that's a good thing. And we're going to finally get sidewalks, been needed for years, but it's gonna happen. So that's another good thing. But I came to talk to you too about the April 5th meeting that I was involved with, with, I gotta find the name, one of those long ones, you know? Paharo River Watershed Flood Prevention Authority, the Board of Directors Meeting. And that meeting was very informative, lots of information. Mark Strudley did a report. You're going to hear more tonight from Steve and Jackie. But I just wanted to let you know that we are in the process of rekindling the Governance and Finance Committee. And that was a committee that was going and we were trying to figure out, how are we going to pay for this levy? How's it going to happen? I mean, how much is going to be federal money, how much state money, and what is our part as residents? Who's going to pay? And so, trying to figure out the feasibility of the different funding alternatives to evaluate the public support. We talk about this and people say, oh, we can't have the flood, this can't happen. But how do we get public support? It's really important. You look all over the United States and you see floods here, floods there, levees breaking. And I think, oh my gosh, just not here. We had it already. We don't want it again. So we need to build community momentum and determine what the successful ballot measure's going to be. We need to define the governance structure and I'm sure all of you will play a part in that. But I just wanted to let you know, we have not quit, we keep going. This was April 5th. The next Zone Seven meeting is here in the Council Chamber on June 17th. So I hope that you'll join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bilicich, and we thank you for your continued service to the city. Anyone else looking to address the Council at this moment on items not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing then, we will now move on to Item Eight B on the Agenda and it is the Mayor's Proclamation declaring May 2019 as Building Safety Month and encouraging all citizens to participate in their communities in building safety activities. And so, is the proclamation over here? All right. Anybody want to join me, Aurelio?
Yeah.
So as I mentioned before, May 2019 will be known as Building Safety Month and it has been for the last few years. And really the purpose of this sort of recognition is to let the public know that, you know, building regulations and safety measures are always on our mind and we always want to make sure that Watsonville's a safe place for everyone. And making sure that all our buildings are up to code, making sure that, you know, when you go to school, when you come here, when you go to a restaurant, that if something were to happen, you know, you're safe is a priority for the city. And so, we're excited and we're always honored to participate in events like this. And Aurelio's here because Aurelio spent the majority of his working life in construction and he's, definitely has firsthand knowledge on the importance of building and safety, right?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, actually, I spent 19 years working in building hospitals. So it's really important to understand the, on the building of a structure and making sure that the building will continue to function even though something, catastrophe could be happening around it or within it. The building has to still be able to maintain its emergency functions to be, people exit out of the building safely. And so it's really important, even those folks that are working in the building, and mostly, the most important people actually are inspectors. Our inspectors are the persons that are gonna make sure that the job is gonna be done correctly. So I thank the inspectors here for the City of Watsonville, because they're always looking out for the best interest of the, of the community.
And Billy, you want to read this paragraph and then we'll go?
Here you go.
We'll start with that one, we don't have to read the whole thing.
Thank you. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of the public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to Americans prosperity and?
Whereas no code, no confidence, the theme of Building Safety Month 2019 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure the safety of our built environment and recognizes that the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and businesses.
Whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, the economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by the local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, the federal agencies, and the protection of lives and property.
Now, therefore, I, Francisco Estrada, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the State of California, on behalf of the City Council hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage all citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. And here to receive the proclamation is our own Rob Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Rob Allen, I am the Building Official for the City. I want to let everybody know that if you're ever interested in coming down to the offices and gathering information about building codes, we're more than happy to take care of you. We do have plans to have information booths set up at Big Creek Lumber, Home Depot, and the Ace Hardware over on East Lake throughout the month of May in order to provide additional information to those people that would like to take a look at some of the information that we can, we can give them. So those are what we've set up for the month of May right now. So, thank you very much for the proclamation, I do appreciate it, and we'll do our very best to serve the community.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We will now move on to Item Eight C on the Agenda and we have Oral Communications about the Watsonville Ivy League Project 2019. So we welcome our students to the chambers. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kayla Cabrera, I'm a junior at Watsonville High and a current participant in the Watsonville Ivy League Project.
My name is Alexis Ramirez, I am a junior at PV High School and I am a participant of the Watsonville Ivy League Project.
Hi there, my name's Olivia Gurney and I'm a sophomore at Watsonville High School, also a participant in the Watsonville Ivy League Project.
And so we're here today with some of the, our fellow participants, this is half of the group. There's 14 students this year. But, so basically, the Ivy League Project is a program that is meant to bring exposure to high achieving students in Watsonville. The program is unique in that it has been the only Ivy League Project program on the Central Coast for the past 10 years and the only project in Santa Cruz County. The population in Watsonville is made up of majority immigrants and people of color, typically from lower socioeconomic levels. Bluntly speaking, elite institutions like Yale, Harvard, and Brown were not made for students from communities like Watsonville. This is why the project is such an incredible attribute to this community. It creates an opportunity to strive for greater things through exposure. Without the project, many students do not realize all that they are capable of and stay stagnant. This project has allowed for myself and my peers to realize that attending an elite institution, an Ivy League institution, is an achievable goal. As of right now, people of color lack representation not only in elite institutions but in government positions, but in government positions of power and positions of wealth. I believe that the only way to fix this is through education. We as a community need to constantly strive to attend these institutions, which is exactly what the Watsonville Ivy League Project is aiding us in doing.
The rigorous application process for the Ivy League Project has helped us become more independent as students. The application process came with a thick packet, essay, and later a face-to-face interview. All of these experiences resemble those of college applications and I know that for me personally, I feel much more prepared for college applications in the future.
So I am here today to talk to you about the impact of the WILP on students and their community. Why does participating in the Watsonville Ivy League Project give participants the confidence to apply to prestigious institutions we visit? Let's talk about one of the principal obstacles we face as a community. Our family's average household income is one of the most significant obstacles Watsonville residents face. The average annual income per household is $46,000 a year. The average student attending these Ivy League institutions are coming from families with an average income of $500,000 or more per year. So I ask again, why are we hesitant? The truth is, family income is an indicator of so much. Social capital, for example. We don't necessarily know anyone belonging to that echelon of society. Participants of the Ivy League Program gain the confidence to apply to such prestigious schools by experiencing the campus itself and meeting different people, enabling us to find out that they sometimes have a similar life story or experience comparable to our own. Moreover, we get to actually picture ourselves in those campuses, sitting in those rooms, reaching that plane. If we are encouraged to apply to these schools, we can motivate our classmates to do the same. I don't want you to think it's just about us going on a fun trip. I want you to think of us attending the university and bringing back that knowledge and experience back to our community. We are not just pickers of the world's berries, we are agents of change who will act for the betterment of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a round of applause for our Ivy League students? Fantastic. I, I know how, how great of a program that is. My wife got to travel with students last year. She didn't invite me, I'm not bitter about it, but, you know, I do know it's, it was a great, not only a great experience for her, but just a life-changing experience for the students. So thank you and we wish you luck. We will now move on to Item D, Eight D on the Agenda, Oral Communication from Council. And today, we will begin with Councilman Gonzalez.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Anyways, I want to start out with Open Streets. We invite everybody to come out here to Open Streets, it's gonna be June 2nd. And it'll be down on Bruin, Bruinton Street, from Bruinton to Freedom Boulevard, from the plaza. But also, we're looking for sponsorship opportunities and you have till May 2nd to be able to go out and sponsor a table or go put out a table. We're also looking for any musicians that are willing to go out there and play some music for the folks who are gonna be going up and down Open Streets. It's a great event and it should be even a greater event this year. We're having hopefully a lot of participants on that. One other thing that's going on is for CAB. I attended the CAB Board Meeting where we had a, we approached our, our action plan. We invited the community to give us their input on poverty. And it was a very good conference. We received a lot of information. Councilman Rebecca was there. We broke down into groups and as a board member, my responsibility was to listen to all the ideas and how we can try to resolve our poverty issue within our community. And what do we need to do, what access they need to have to jobs, to health. We know that health is really important to help folks out in the community. So, but that was a really good, good conversation we had on that one on the public forum. The other thing is the Complete Count Committee, met April 17th, that was through CAB also, is organizing that. And it's the census, it's really important. We can't stress it out, it's, we need to get the word out that everybody counts. I count, you count, we all count. And that's our motto and we're gonna stick with it. Also, the City of Watsonville will have a booth on what they announced on Earth Day. So we'll be out there also giving information about the census. And don't forget, as I mentioned, Earth Day, April 28th, at the plaza. We'd hope to see everybody there. And the last one, I went to, I went to a Head Start, early Head Start program through Encompass, which helped them review their process and the importance of getting, getting an early start on education, which helps in the long run to ensure that the kids stay in school and are successful in school. And this actually starts from when the woman is pregnant to, to, all the way to the age of three and five, when they go into kindergarten. So, that was, that was a really good, another good public forum that I attended, where they came out with a lot of good ideas on how to deal with, making sure, and it's incredible to understand it, you know, you think about Head Start and you're saying, wow, you know? It's, it's only Head Start, you can, you can miss school. And actually, that's, that's the beginning, that's where we want to make sure that they continuously go to Head Start. And because by the time they get into kindergarten, they'll, they'll get over that social fear of going to school and they'll be more engageable sociably. So it's a really good program. I hope you guys encourage the support Head Start, especially early Head Start. And I know it'll probably help out teachers in the long run. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Hernandez?
Been a little under the weather the last few days. But first, I want to thank the Watsonville Police Department for all the work they've been doing on Distracted Driving Month. They've been doing, I guess April is Distracted Driving Month and they've been doing a lot of work to keep our streets safe. You know, people gotta abide by the rules, whether you're a pedestrian, bicyclist, or a driver, it's always the best to, to follow the rules. So I want to thank the Police Department for all the work they've been doing on that. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but there are some new banners downtown that have to do with bike and pedestrian safety. If you guys take a look at them and read some of those, some of those messages, I want to thank the City Manager Staff and Public Works for putting those banners there and, and making our- uh, I want to thank the city manager staff and public works for putting those banners there and, and making our community safer and our streets safer. With that, I also attended a few events, uh, one of them was the Chamber Mixer over at Latin. I don't know if you guys, uh, anyone is a gardener, it's a great place for all your gardening needs and all your flowers and plants. I had the opportunity to attend the Florescer de la Mujer and it was a local history of women in leadership here in Watsonville. I wish a lot of people would have, a lot of people that I could have invited, I wish would have attended. Actually, I did invite a lot of folks, but I wish they would have attended, it was a really good program of a lot of local history that I wasn't aware about. A lot of local history that's probably not even in the old papers, uh, but that should probably be documented at some point. Uh, I also attended the, uh, it was a Pahravelli Caesar Chavez Democratic Club's South County Leadership, introducing all the new elected officials in our community and, and, you know, uh, picking their brain about their vision of, of the, uh, municipality or the district that they're in. Uh, so that was a great event to see all the new people that are in office. Uh, we also had the opportunity to attend the VFW fundraiser, that's the Veterans of Foreign Wars. It was our first annual, uh, chili cook-off fundraiser and it was pretty successful for their first one. Hopefully more folks can make it out the next time. And then just, uh, yesterday evening, we attended the Santa Cruz County Strategic Plan Input Meeting that they had right here, right next door. And that's, uh, determining which direction the county's gonna move in and which, uh, priorities they're gonna have as a county. And of course, one of the things that I always stressed on the little dots that we're giving is South County and the priority that South County needs to have to make it more equitable. Few events happening that I want to invite people to, one is the airport is hosting their Wheels at the Airport Car Show, that's Saturday, April twenty-seventh. So if you have a nice hot rod or a, uh, modern, modern car, you could take it over on April, Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from ten to five at the airport. The Earth Day was, Earth Day and the day a child was already mentioned, that's Sunday, April twenty-eighth. Uh, another event coming up the following month is the Cinco de Mayo, uh, that's happening here in the Plaza. I don't know if anyone's ever attended, but it's a well-attended event. Cinco de Mayo, obviously it's happening on the actual day of Cinco de Mayo, on Sunday, uh, from eleven-thirty to five PM here in the Plaza. And then there's the Second Annual Art Beer and Wine Walk that's happening on Saturday, May eleventh. It begins, I guess, same place, it begins here at the Civic Plaza from one to five. And of course, the Open Streets was already mentioned, uh, I think the site is Brennan Street, not Bruington though, uh, that's on June second. Mark your calendar and bring your bikes, all the young people, or skateboards, or your, walk your dog or whatever.
Thank you.
That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Councilman Hearst?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, I think Felipe and Aurelio covered it pretty well of the last couple of weeks, uh, events in town. There were, I did have a chance to meet with, uh, Assembly Member Robert Rivas's representatives and, and talk about farmworker housing and what we can do, uh, about farmworker housing, how we can build more opportunities through the state and local efforts. And we did hear from the PV Arts people a little while earlier and if you haven't had a chance to go over to their, uh, to their facility and look at the wonderful photos of Bob Fitch and, uh, it's a, it's a walk down memory lane. And we've also had that walk down memory lane recently with the historic Gomez versus Watsonville, uh, voter rights court decision. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, Representative Garcia for her work in that and, uh, the panel discussion. Chamber Commerce Mixer was really good, there's another one coming up next month. Complete Street, I was at the Complete Streets briefing recently and, uh, the Open Streets Planning Meeting as well. So we got a lot of focus on streets. AgTech is, uh, having their monthly meeting tomorrow and you can, uh, see that on the web as well. Coming up on Friday is the PV Live Conference and I think, uh, Mayor's gonna talk about that a little bit. But there's also an electric, uh, vehicle, uh, ribbon cutting on Ford Street. Lift Line is moving their vehicles, uh, to, uh, electric power. And, uh, Earth Day has been said, uh, multiple times. I just want everybody to look on the wall for a moment though and think about why we're really here and, and all the events and all the other things that we do and, and how opportunity through diversity and unity through cooperation, that, that really is our motto and that's what we should be living every day here too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Parker?
Hi there, it was a, a busy couple of weeks, it's been sunny, spring has sprung, blustery and I hope everyone had a wonderful, um, Easter weekend. I want to thank Chief Honda and his watch captain, uh, Mike McKinley, who came out, uh, to Paro Vista's HOA Board, um, Meeting and, uh, I think we had about twenty or thirty residents who were very upset about the rash of car break-ins in their area and next to their homes. Uh, and Chief Honda was extremely open, transparent, he answered questions, uh, and everyone walked away feeling heard and with a renewed hope of a little bit more closer connection to, uh, policing in our area. We also met with a group and I think they're here, students, uh, what, Safe Ag, Safe Students, it's a SAS group. And I love that name SAS, cause the, it's a grassroots group, um, that I think, hey, I just started. It's a grassroots group that I, I, I attended a meeting with council members Hernandez and Gonzalez that brought us a huge amount of facts, um, about Roundup and pesticide use and how it affects our health. And that was very educational and appreciated. I ended my week, uh, with a fabulous time at the city of Watsonville's Ag Estraganza and, and it's right up there at Pinal Lake Park and there is Recreation Supervisor Israel Turello who did a fabulous job. And that's my mom, she's ninety-six and she's got a great picture, if we could go back to that, you got it on, on the flow, it's going quick. Um, with the Easter Bunny and AKA, um, Mayor Francisco Estrada.
Allegedly.
Uh, allegedly. Yeah, he took hundreds of pictures with little kids, families and as you can see, older folks, it was unbelievably well-attended. We had a great time and I, I, hundreds of people were out there at Pinal Lake Park and I know that, um, on Nextdoor and other places, they were asking, what's going on at Pinal Lake Park, there's so many people. And it was, it was just a really great day and I want to thank, uh, Mayor Estrada for allegedly doing something beyond and dressing up in, in a bunny costume. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Um, I attended many of the activities and events that my colleagues attended, but I just want to talk about two. The Santa Cruz Volunteer Bureau recently had a Celebrate Potential Award Ceremony where I spoke and gave a certificate to participants of the Watsonville Mariposa Wellness Center. Mental health has a stigma, but Mariposa helps participants to find pride, empowerment and success in life. They provide opportunities for employment, attendance at Cabrillo College and many give lots of volunteer hours. And in fact, in the past year, those that were attending or participating in the Wellness Center gave over seven hundred hours of volunteer service to Watsonville. It was truly inspirational and exciting to be able to acknowledge these mental health participants. And as Councilmember Aurelio mentioned, I did attend the Community Action Board, uh, Forum to address poverty, which they do every two years. I think he failed to mention that he's on their board and that's why he was there. I went just, I was gonna say Meteche, how do you tra, how, how, how do you translate Meteche? Busybody, okay, it's a busybody. Community member, okay. Uh, and, and what we were asked to do was to give, share our thoughts on needs, assets and solutions. In the Spanish-speaking group in which I participated, it was very interesting to hear a gentleman from, uh, Davenport complain that because of the house situations where even in Davenport, they have two, three, four families living in a house which naturally means many, many vehicles. And so often, this gentleman has had to park, uh, in no parking zones. And so he's often gives ticket, he's given tickets. And so here, ticket is given to somebody that is low-income, having to live in a house with many, uh, other families and it's very difficult for him to pay those tickets. And so I started wondering, if you remember a few months ago, we had, uh, red stripes put on our sidewalks which meant less parking for some of our families. And so I'm wondering if maybe some of our families now are getting ticketed. Um, and of course, uh, many of them may be low-income families. And finally, I want to, uh, address to my colleagues, almost all of them mentioned, uh, April twenty-eighth, Earth Day. If you remember at our last meeting, I invited every one of you to volunteer to be at the census booth that the city's going to have. And as of yesterday, I was told nobody's volunteered yet. So I'm hoping, uh, I'm encouraging you to please consider to volunteer on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, that's, I encourage everyone to volunteer as well. And I actually knew the translation, but I don't want the minutes to reflect that I called you a busybody, so that's why I let somebody else say it. Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez?
Uh, thank you, um, taking up the, the rear edge here with all of the comments that are made, there's a few other events that are still out there. So if you do have your calendars still out there, let me give you a couple more dates and times of things going on. This Thursday is actually the Chamber of Commerce Business Expo that's going to be held at the Fairgrounds and it's overwhelming, all three buildings are going to have the businesses, I think there are job information that's out there as well. I think there are some that are recruiting for openings that they may have for their businesses. It's a very successful event that the chamber does put on and it's a free event to attend, I think it's at four o'clock to about seven o'clock at night. So, um, the youth may be looking for something or, or our community wants to know a little bit more about some of our local businesses. I encourage you to go out there to support that particular event. We've talked about Earth Day already, the Down-to-Earth Women Luncheon is gonna be held on the ninth of May. This particular luncheon normally sells out and what it is, is a fundraiser that accrues the funds for scholarships for our youth. So I, maybe, maybe some of us from council will be attending this particular event and we honor somebody in, in the ag community or, or that really complements the ag business, um, industry that's here, um, each year. So anybody interested in that, they can check in with the, the Farm Bureau here. We have the, um, the Day on the Farm, the second Saturday of the month, uh, which is the eleventh of May. We'll have the, the Day on the Farm over at the Fairgrounds as well, so we encourage, um, you to go out there and bring your youth, bring, bring the children. Give them some of the hands-on experience of, you know, what this agriculture community has been about. All of us have had our hands in the dirt, um, with the, the soil and, and the, the industry that we have here. So, uh, get that experience out there and let the kids, um, enjoy that and understand, you know, where their food comes from that's on their plate. And, um, the Phil Rather Event that's at the PV Health Trust is to honor somebody in the healthcare industry for all of what they do for our community. Uh, that event is gonna be on the May fifteenth in the afternoon, I think about five PM. And there's also a health fair that is going to be held at Salud this Friday in conjunction with the Pahravelli Health Trust. Perhaps your mayor has the time on that?
May tenth.
Uh, May tenth at what time?
Uh, four to seven in the Plaza.
Okay, four to ten, four to seven, so, um, we encourage you to come and, and take a look at that and, um, enjoy that particular event that's for free for the public as well. Um, I, and I want to bring something up that was part of the close, uh, there was a consent agenda and that's to say thank you very much for those folks at Home Depot that were donating the two thousand dollars to help us with getting thirty-eight, um, children's car seats, uh, so that we know that our children in the vehicles are, are safe out there. So I want to say thank you to them for this. I also want to thank the, the Fire Department for their involvement annually, um, for this safety item that really benefits our community here. So kudos to you out there for, um, doing that, that effort for our community here. Thank you.
Thank you. I've, uh, as, uh, my colleagues have mentioned, it's been a busy few weeks since we last saw you, but, uh, the highlight really was the egg hunt as Councilwoman Parker said, uh, I had to leave, I didn't get to see the Easter Bunny, but I heard he was amazing. And, um, but it was great and I, I want to just give kudos to the whole Parks and Community Services Department for putting that on, that was outstanding. Um, we are having a health fair, May tenth in La Plaza, it's Mexican Mother's Day. Uh, but if you want to get information on diabetes prevention and other health-related services in the community, we invite you to the Plaza that day. And, uh, as Councilman Hearst said, uh, Live PV Conference will take place, uh, this Friday, it's an all-day event. And it's really to, to see how, uh, you know, we can leverage, uh, each other's work and resources to have more of a collective impact in this community. So, uh, you can go to the PV Health Trust website to find more information on the conference. And if my colleagues will indulge me, I'd like to invite Miguel Oregel up to the podium real quick. And, um, it's sort of a, there was an item that we couldn't get, it was kind of last-minute, it's out of the agenda, but as you can see, we have a number of students here and they're all from the Close Up Program. And they will all be going to Washington DC soon and, uh, they were nice enough to pick, collect garbage over the, the weekend and I, I just wanted to yield my time to Miguel so he can tell us a little bit about these amazing students.
Well, thank you so much for your time, um, we have a great group of students. We are taking twenty of our migrant, uh, middle school students to Washington DC and twenty of our high school migrant students. Uh, these are students whose parents work in agriculture and the picking strawberries or any type of, uh, agriculture-related jobs. And we know that, um, if it wasn't because of the Close Up migrant program, these kids wouldn't be able to, be able to participate. So we're very thankful for you guys having us here, we wanted them to come and check, um, the, the meeting, um, how the city council works. Cause we want to make sure they know that you guys work. So, um, thank you and, uh, they're looking forward to the, to the trip. So, I don't know if any of the students want to say something?
We'd be happy to invite anybody to say something.
Can you guys stand up so they know who's the group? Uh, I know we're missing some, um, don't be shy. And we also wanted to thank, uh, Paco for coming over on, um, on Saturday morning, giving some of his time before, uh, he went over to Pinal Lake and, um, and gave, uh, some words of wisdom to our students, uh, which was really nice. I know Paco had the opportunity to do this program back in his high school days, many moons ago. So, thank you so much. Uh, the kids were, are gonna be picking garbage, uh, this coming Saturday as well. They did it this Saturday and they're gonna be doing it again, that's how they wanted to give back to the city. We did, uh, we walked along, along the sleuth on, on Saturday morning and it was really cool. So we're gonna do it again this coming Saturday. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Oregel. I will, uh, see you on Saturday morning and, uh, believe it or not, Mr. Oregel actually is the, he took me to Washington and I'm really happy that he's still taking students to Washington DC, so. He hasn't aged a day, not a day, he's still a Cowboys fan, but, you know, it's all right. All right, thank you. Uh, we will move on to item eight E on the agenda, report out of closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, the closed session tonight was a conference with real property negotiator regarding Three Second Street. And the council gave direction to the negotiator regarding lease terms and conditions and, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item nine, reports to council, uh, these are just reports, there, no action is required. So we will begin with, um, item nine A, presentation of city's mission statement made by city, uh, Deputy City Manager, Tamara Vives.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, I'm, I'm very proud to, to come, um, share, um, this important item with you which is the result of the work of every single employee of the city of Watsonville. Uh, as part of our employee engagement program, one of our goals this year was to develop a mission statement that really- that really reflected the, the values of the city as an organization and how we, as city employees, serve our community. So over the last year, we worked with employees of all city departments, and we asked them to share what were their most important values at work, what they saw was most important. With employees' input, we developed our core values. And to no surprise, they are teamwork, integrity and honesty, service, and respect. Definitely, like I said, it, it wasn't a surprise that these are the values that all of our employees feel are the most important to them. And they really, we believe that they really reflect the dedication and the hard services, service, that, and, and actually the highest standards that we, city employees, bring when we come up work. So we took those values. We started thinking about, how do they reflect, when we, when we come to work? How, how do we see those values coming through? And we asked you that same question back in February, when we met with the council during our, our annual council workshop. And we all had an opportunity to see how, how we can relate to those in the work that we all do. So based on these core values, we work on developing a mission statement for the organization. And I'm very proud to share with the council, I guess, for the first time today, what, what we have created and what we believe is going to reflect, continue to reflect the way we work here in Watsonville, our, our mission statement. And it reads this, "Working with our community to create positive impact through service with heart." This mission statement, again, I think really reflects the way we all come and work on behalf of our community every day. We do it with courage, with compassion, and with integrity. So we are just really proud to present this to the council and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? How long was this, the whole process?
It took us several months, actually. During the course of the last year, we started working with every single city employee department, working on the core values. And then began, once we established the core values, we, we work on establishing the mission, making sure that the mission, the values were connected.
Councilwoman Garcia?
My experience, thank you for going through this process and doing this. I think this is a great mission statement. But my experience with mission statements is there's usually a vision statement also. Will that happen?
That may happen. We, we decided that we wanted to really work on the mission first. The, the vision is much more far-reaching, and at some point, we might consider engaging in that. But we wanted to have a statement that really reflects how, how we come to work. How do we serve our community? And we felt that we wanted to start with a mission statement, so.
Councilwoman Hurst?
I just want to thank tomorrow and all our staff. You know, the, the city couldn't operate without an effective and fully engaged staff. And it's, and it's, we've been through some very tough times in the past, where people really had to make a lot of sacrifices. And, and I know that there's still sacrifices out there that they're going to probably have to make. And, and so it's important that we approach this with a teamwork spirit. And like the motto says on the wall, and that we engage each other in, in, in the honesty and the integrity and, and the service aspects of it. And so my hat's off to all the employees. I didn't get a chance to go to the employee breakfast this year, but I, I, I know that it was well-attended. And, and that's the kind of heart that we have. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Nicely said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we will now go to Item 9B, Paharo River Levy Programs and Projects Update. And we will have Director Palmasano give us an update. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Estrada and council, again. So, we have an update on the levy projects and programs tonight. And I just wanted to introduce Jackie McLeod, who wears many hats for our organization. And you're going to see a few of them tonight in this presentation. But what I wanted to talk about to introduce her is that the Federal Levy Project is a joint project between the Federal Army Corps of Engineers, the two counties, Santa Cruz County, Monterey County, and the city of Watsonville. And so amongst, in the midst of those giant bureaucracies that we're working with, it's very easy for our community to lose its voice in the kind of complexity and the bureaucracies there. And so we are very fortunate to have a strong and clear and intelligent voice to represent, represent our community in those meetings, which go on and on. And weave in and out of all sorts of crazy processes over years. And so I just feel very grateful that we have Jackie to be a fierce advocate for our community in that process, where our small community can get lost in the very arduous process. So we are in great hands with Jackie. And she's going to give us an update on the levy project, as well as some other programs associated with flood protection for our community. So with that, turn it over.
Well, that's going to be a hard one to follow. Good evening, thank you, Mayor, and council members and members of the public. I'm happy to present on the Paharo River Levy Programs and Projects, it's not just going to be the specific Army Corps of Engineers projects. We're going to look at everything the city's involved in. So first, I want to place us. So we are located in the Paharo River watershed, which is a 1,300-square-mile watershed. That's really big. It encompasses four counties, San Benito, Santa Clara, Monterey, and Santa Cruz. We are fortunate that we live at the very bottom of the watershed, in the lower six square miles. So we are a tiny little area, but we have a lot of requirements that we go through. The city is a state-recognized disadvantaged community. One of your students, I was really impressed, was able to highlight that the median household income is $46,000. Our per capita is about $18,000 for homes, so very low income. So we have the benefit of getting a lot of state resources for that. So now I want to zone in on our actual project area. I want to highlight that the red outline is the project extent. I'm not saying that this is where the project is going to eventually end up. But we are going to be looking at from Highway 1 Bridge throughout the city limits, which includes Watsonville city limits, to the confluence of Salsa Puertas Creek. Then the project will wind its way around on the Salsa Puertas through Highway 152, I believe, up to Airport Road. So it's a very large footprint. And it's divided into reaches, and we're still waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers. They have a report up at headquarters in Washington DC. We're waiting for final approval. That should be coming in April, oh, wait, that should be now. So we're waiting for that report. We're waiting for a director's report to finalize the project. They had to go back and look at some of the economic studies, as well as some of their modeling. Once that report comes out, we're going to be moving into the next phase, requesting funding for pre-engineering and designing for the federal project. Within the city of Watsonville limits, the aim is to get 100-year level of protection for our residents. So that would be able to protect them from flooding. So we have a brief history of Paharo River Flood Control Project milestones. Many of you are probably more familiar with this because you live within the city. You have been a part of this. So in 1949, the levees were built. They're earth and dam, so it's basically dirt that's been compacted out there. Well, in 1955, the river breached, and those levees did not stand up. So through congressional authorization in 1966, the Army Corps of Engineers was directed by Congress to, to build new levees within Watsonville. I said 1966, in case anyone didn't hear me. And so they authorized that project. Now we're into 1995 and 98. That picture probably haunts a lot of you, that was in the first slide. That was the 95 flood that breached and flooded the town of Paharo, as well as many parts of Watsonville. Come 2017, we all had that same fear, because we saw the Paharo River rising. It was about within two feet of the top of the Paharo River off of Main Street. That's what our gauge read. You'll see a picture of it in my next slide. From that 2017 project, 17, in 2017, there were 17 project sites that were scoured or the levees were broken up a little bit. So with the efforts of our partnership through the County of Santa Cruz and the Army Corps of Engineers, we were able to apply for an emergency grant through the Army Corps. And it was about a $6 million cost to repair those 17 sites. So in 2018, you probably saw a lot of Army Corps activity along Salsa Puertas and the Paharo River, where they were repairing those sites. Those costs were born completely out of the federal government. They were not out of the city or the county. Those projects definitely got completed. They're going to come back sometime in August to repair one more site on Salsa Puertas. And here we are in '29, and they've completed, 2019, where they've completed the feasibility study. That's been 50 years since the original authorization, and we still don't have a project in the ground. We have separable projects, but not the complete project. So unfortunately, I'm sorry to keep bringing this up, but it really, the visual shows what happened in 1995 when we had that major flooding. It was $95 million of economic damages, not to say there was one loss of life in the town of Paharo. So we have a human safety element to this project that we're really working with the counties on and with the Army Corps of Engineers. We do not want to see this ever happen again. So I'm going to head back now to those 17 project sites. We had some recent emergency repairs. Our city of Watsonville Public Works Crew really led the way in responding to these emergencies in a timely, effective, and efficient manner to repair those, so no flooding happened in the community along the creeks. So you can see the before, there's a large scour, and we were able to put riprap in temporarily until the Army Corps was able to come in and put a permanent solution in. And the graphic on this, this is from our field, our water services manager took this picture. And it really highlights that a lot of our homes are built below the level of the creeks and rivers. So we have a large job ahead of us, and we take it very seriously about how are we going to prevent flooding? And how are we going to mitigate for these flood emergencies in the future? And this is to highlight what the river looks like and why we are so fearful. When Representative Panetta was here, he was able to see this happening live in 2017. But in 2018 and 2019, we saw the same level of the river. So what can we do? How are we going to mitigate for these flood emergencies, knowing that the Army Corps of Engineers process is where the federal process is? We are still going to work collaboratively, but the city leads a lot of these efforts. We have a lot of good stewards within Public Works, Parks, and the other departments of the city. We host a free sandbagging event with Home Depot every year, where we put, we make the sandbags. We put them in discreet places throughout the city of Watsonville. I know Fire Station 2 is one of those drop-offs. I believe we also go into the Paharo Village, Bay Village area and have a drop-off for sandbags. I did hear one time that we had some of our Public Works employees actually deliver sandbags to people who weren't able to get to them. We are upgrading our EOC operations, so that's Emergency Operations Center. We're trying to streamline our activities so that we're able to better respond to those emergencies. We were a huge part, and you'll see the lower picture, that's along East Lake there. We were a huge part of making sure that those emergency repairs happen without impeding any sort of pedestrian traffic. We definitely had to close areas, but we were able to still have recreational opportunities there. And then you'll see in the lower right, that's an emergency repair along the Paharo River. So now I'm going to go into some of the other activities that the city does to improve flood opportunities mitigation. We have a community rating system program that we are voluntarily working, implementing. Thank you. Sorry, guys. We're voluntarily implementing through FEMA, which is the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Most of Watsonville and the town of Paharo are located within the 100-year floodplain. The goal of us participating in this program, identifying gaps in activities that we're implementing, is to reduce flood insurance rates for residents up to 10% to 15%. Director Palmasano has a very lofty goal for us, that we will improve that to up to 20%. So he has staff working on that right now. So that's one of the programs we participate in. We also received a $150,000 California Office of Emergency Services grant to write a local hazard mitigation plan. Right now, the city is captured within the county-wide local hazard mitigation plan. But as I stated previously, Director Palmasano has directed staff to improve our community rating system score. By having our own city local hazard mitigation plan, we will be able to contribute to that score and also help reduce flood insurance rates. This local hazard mitigation plan is a, going to be a big effort with a lot of stakeholder engagement. So we're really hoping the community gets involved and is able to contribute to this mitigation plan. Another project that Director Palmasano has staff working on is we have the city of City Wastewater Treatment Plant and Recycled Water Facility Levy Protection. So as you know, we have a state-of-the-art facility that we operate, where we process about 8 million gallons per day of sewage. Most of that gets treated and sent to the recycle plant, which is used in agricultural fields. It's about a $300 million asset to the city. It has the same level of protection as the rest of the city's levees, which is about five-to-eight-year level of storm protection. So we applied for a California Office of Emergency Services grant in the tune of $2.7 million to put sheet piling, which are vinyl plastic that we're going to drive into the levy to protect the facility. Other opportunities we have, and we have great teams working on this. We do lots of levy maintenance and cleanups. We do not do this solely as just the city. We work with the County of Santa Cruz quite a bit. We also work with volunteer organizations. The neat thing about the levy maintenance and cleanups is that also hits other programmatic goals, like the stormwater program, that we're able to then get multiple points through both of our permits and our programs. I asked for figures probably two months ago to report to California Office of Emergency Services. And field services crews in one month had removed 180 cubic yards of trash out of the drainages. So they are busy, and they're going out three times a week. We all know what we need, our new levees, though. And so now I'm going to talk a little bit about the Army Corps' Paharo River Levy Project and where we're at in that. So this is a picture of our current conditions, meaning no new levees, it, it's as-is. Most of the city is within that 100-year floodplain, as well as the town of Paharo. The proposed upgrades that the Corps has made will make it like this. So I'm going to flip back to the previous slide, so you can see the floodplain, and then that. So this is what we want. We want to see no floodplain in Watsonville or the town of Paharo. We want to protect all our residents, as well as the town of Paharo. We're hoping that we get this into construction within, the Zone 7 flood manager said, within the next three to four years. We're hopeful we'll get the funding through the federal corps to be able to do that. So our major levy needs are, we have some of the lowest level of urban flood protection statewide. We only have five-year level of protection. That's not very much, given climate change and where we're seeing, you know, higher intensity, longer frequency rainstorms, but they're coming less often. But the, like, 2016, and now here we are, 2019, and we saw the same storms. So without reconstruction, we have a potential for some devastating damages, as we saw in 1995 and 1998. The Army Corps is years behind schedule. We were supposed to have the director's report two years ago at this point. So we know that their process is slower, which is why we're being directed as staff to do other projects to make a difference in the community. As I said, the director's report was set for April. We have about a week, so we'll see. I'll keep everyone updated on that. We did get initial costs. As I said, the Army Corps has to go back through their economic model, but the estimated construction cost- but the estimated construction cost of what they're proposing is four-hundred million dollars. About ten years ago, it was two-hundred million, so the price has gone up significantly. The federal cost share is sixty-five percent, which is two-hundred-and-sixty million dollars. We have a thirty-five percent responsibility, which would be a hundred-and-forty million dollars in local cost share. So that would be borne by the city and the two counties. Out of that hundred-and-forty million, Director Palmasano, when he used to sit in my position, was able to work with the State of California Department of Water Resources to secure subventions funding through the Water Code. So it is written into Water Code that we get a seventy percent match from the state to cover part of that local cost share, which would be about ninety-eight million, which would leave forty-two million for the two counties and city. So it's nice to see the numbers decrease, but we feel as though that forty-two million is still quite a bit to bear. So what can we do? Well, as Director Billisich had said, we're going to have a huge stakeholder engagement process coming up, both through the local hazard mitigation process, as well as through finance and governance. Through the Finance and Governance Committee, we're going to identify options for securing that local cost share, and we're going to also work on how can we manage the river and creek levy across all three jurisdictions, knowing that we have four counties in there that are helping and working towards providing hundred-year level of protection at the end of the watershed. So we really encourage all community members, everyone, to be involved in this process. And that will begin over the next two months, and we will make sure to notify everyone when those meetings are occurring. We continue to always search for state grant funding and options for this project, whether it's separable elements of the project or the full-match requirement for the federal project. Steve definitely always has me searching for grants. We, we have a lot of partner agencies and opportunities. Director Billisich highlighted Paharo River Watershed Flood Prevention Authority. She's the vice chair for that board. She represents us well. She's been serving on that board for probably, well, I've been in my position for about five years, and she's been representing us. That effort, you can sort of see, it's County of Monterey, County of San Benito, County of Santa Clara, County of Santa Cruz, Monterey County Water Resources Agency, San Benito County Water District, and Santa Clara Valley Water District, and Santa Cruz County. There is a lot of political weight that is within that authority. We have been lobbied in Washington, D.C. by Santa Clara Valley Water District, supporting this project getting built. So it's a great opportunity for us. They also look for grant funding for the lower watershed as well. We just went through a process where we applied for four grants through them. So we're going to keep working with the Watershed Flood Prevention Authority. That is also another opportunity for community and residents to get involved in. Those are public meetings that folks can attend. So what can you do as a resident or a community member? We strongly recommend that you attend Zone Seven meetings. As Director Billisich had said, we're going to have one in Watsonville at seven PM, June, I believe, seventeenth. It's in the City Hall, City Council Chambers. She serves as vice chair on that, on that board. We also really want to encourage residents, you can write your local legislators and your federal legislators to express support for new levees and this project. So we want to encourage everyone to use their voice in this process. One other thing that I was directed to do by both, by pretty much everyone at this point is Zone Seven Chair Zach Supervisor-Friend was able to work the National Association of County Organizations to get a resolution passed to urge the Army Corps of Engineers to have them review how they calculate the economics. And so we are doing the similar through the National Association of League of Cities. We will be getting a similar resolution started and hopefully passed. So I'm going to be looking for your support in that effort, as I was directed to do it. And I believe that's it. I'm happy to answer any and all questions. Thank you.
First off, thank you for your report. That was excellent. Questions and comments from my colleagues? Councilwoman Garcia?
I lived on San Juan Road in Paharo for the nineteen fifty-five flood. I lived in Elm Street in Watsonville for the nineteen ninety-five flood. And so I'm just so pleased to hear everything that Watsonville is doing in terms of pursuing grants and supporting legislative action to address the flood issues. And I know it's very complex. My question, although you did mention Santa Clara County, but I'm, I'm just wondering, what are all the other counties, Monterey, San Benito, and Santa Clara, doing in terms of addressing the Paharo Valley River, or the Paharo River conditions?
So the great news is Monterey County is actually our counterpart in the federal project. So they have the same requirements that Santa Cruz and the city of Watsonville do. So in terms of how often they're maintaining the river corridor and channel, or the creeks corridors. So they go out and they clean, and there's, I believe they have a schedule similar to Santa Cruz County, where it's, they do it in the summertime, so they're not impeding on habitat. Santa Clara, as well as San Benito, through that four-county effort, were able to create a flood attenuation plain in Santa Clara where it allows for the river to actually go there, settle for, I don't know, I believe, how long? Soap Lake? Yeah, so it's Soap Lake. So it's a flood attenuation for days that the river will stay there, and then it comes out into the main channel. So they participate by doing separable projects in the upper watershed. All four counties are under a stormwater permit, too, and the Paharo River is listed for sediment impairment. So we are required to comply with that as an entire region through the Central Coast Water Board.
Thank you.
One more thing. The other piece of the Four-County Flood Prevention Authority is that they do also do lobbying trips back to D.C. and represent our project on behalf of the four counties, which gives us a lot more sort of oomph when we're back there lobbying. So that's another way that that effort helps us.
Councilwoman Hearst?
Can we get that slide back up with the valley view of the ninety-five flood? You know, that, that was a horrendous event, and maybe just a sample of what might happen to us in the future. We're really sitting on a ticking time bomb. This is one of the, you know, a life-changing, catastrophic thing that affected all kinds of lives, and particularly agricultural production. You can imagine the, the filth that's associated with a flood and, and how that would affect any grower of organic produce and, and put them out of the market for over a year or more. And homes were flooded, businesses were destroyed, people lost their livelihood. Now, I don't know what the dollar value would be, but I would assume it'd be twice as much as it would be in ninety-five. Fortunately, I had just rotated out of the mayorship then, and, and Tony Campos was, was the mayor. Well, it wasn't a rotation, you know. Back in those days, the council was selected by the council members. And so, you know, he got stuck with all, all those big problems, and I thought I got off the hook a little bit, but there was so much suffering in the community and so much economic damage. So here we are at the terminus of the Paharo River, a thirteen-thousand-square-mile watershed. It didn't even have to rain in Watsonville for it to flood. If it, if it rains heavy upstream, we could be sunny skies and still be wiped out by this. And so it's time for the Corps of Engineers and everybody else to get busy and buck up and get, get focused on what is probably one of the main dangers to this community, that and earthquakes. And we can do something about this one. It is preventable, but we need to get the feds along with the preparation. And so I can't stress how serious this really is. You know, when, on days like today, you don't think about this. And, and this winter, we didn't really think about it too much, although those of us that have been through these, these floods, we think about it every time it rains. And so let's do whatever we can as a community altogether in making sure our voice is heard in Washington and, and as well as at Santa Cruz and Monterey County and, and Santa Clara County when it comes to flood prevention and the, and the incredible risk that this community's in.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hearst. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you. So Councilwoman Garcia, my family was in Paharo in nineteen fifty-five. My dad brought the snorkel truck in from Fort Ord to take my grandmother's piano out, because that was catastrophic at the time, because they were right on the river. And then in nineteen ninety-five, we were all here in District Seven. And believe me, every day, residents of District Seven that have been here for ten or twenty years really do know what it's like to count the clock. They go down, they have their lights, and they go check the river levels, and they get back. And it's really hard for many people to have sandbags and have them and transport them themselves. So all those efforts that we saw by the city, and even more so, you know, in certain areas, especially in District Seven, to protect our, our residents. But I had a question about, and I think it's fabulous, community rating about the reducing our flood insurance rates, because that's one of the things that we talked to Representative Jimmy, you know, excuse me, Congressman Panetta about, is, you know, Congress sets these rates by their maps, right? And so insurance then turns around and looks at the maps that Congress sets, and then they put these rates, and it's sky-high. So especially since they're not supporting it anyway, and in the last few years, people have just been horrendously hit with flood insurance rates. It's like, it's like the water, because some people can't afford to keep their homes. So tell me what the magic is, because I'm really excited by this thought of five-to-twenty percent reduction.
Do you want me to? Okay. So Director Palmasano recognized an opportunity. We are scored every single year in July. We have a representative come from California Office of Emergency Services in FEMA Region Nine, and they go through our, all of our flood programs and stormwater program efforts. And they look at how many points we get in each category. Director Palmasano had us go through that list and identify areas where we know we are going above and beyond, but we tend to be really reactive in flood emergencies, and we don't stop to write it down. And so we're going back and capturing those activities to increase our score. I believe we're in eight right now. Where our first step is to get to a seven. Director Palmasano would like to get us even higher than that, but it's going to take incremental steps. Developing that local hazard mitigation plan will also add points into the community rating service.
And, and how does that impact? Because I'm looking at insurance rates.
So within the guidelines, we have a consultant that we're working with. Within the guidelines, if you look at the table, if you're in the special flood hazard area, you'll get either a ten percent or a fifteen percent decrease in your flood insurance premiums.
And that's through FEMA? That's like the, the National Flood Insurance?
Yeah, it's through National Flood Insurance Program.
Okay, and then some folks don't have that. Some folks just have a...
If you're outside the special flood hazard...
No, they're actually in that, but they own their homes, so they don't, they're not required to.
Oh, right, right.
So they're, they're not paying a mortgage. Would they have any cut rates on that?
I would have to look into that further, and I'm happy to get back to you.
I'm excited about that.
Well, you can thank, you can thank our leader for that.
And anything I can do, I'm sure...
Laureous leader.
Yeah, our fearless leader who has tasked us with this effort.
That's pretty exciting. Could you tell me what sediment impairment is?
Sediment impairment, so we have a lot of erosion happening. So basically, the rocks are really soft in the watershed, and what happens is water runs off of it, breaks them up, and that gets within the river and creeks, and it can actually cause it to, we call it sultation, or it sort of piles up at the bottom of the creek. And so the goal is to stop the sediment from there. And the impairment language comes directly out of the stormwater permit.
A few years ago, well, a year ago, there were two or three presentations. We know we had one out at Paharo Village, about something was going to happen, and they were going to okay the plan. The plan was going to happen last summer, and then implementation would happen the following summer. This is what you've been talking about.
So that's the federal project. And so, yes, we're still waiting for that Army Corps Director's Report that's supposed to come out this month. What did happen was they were able to do those seventeen repair sites with the Army Corps through a different department than their planning department.
Well, I, I agree with Councilwoman Hearst. This is a catastrophic moment waiting to happen to Watsonville. And, and there's, it's, it's not just property. When it gets this bad, it could be loss of life. And we already lost one. I know that we were asked to leave our homes and abandon them, and they had the police going up and down the streets, you know, at one point. So it, it's not, you know, it's not somewhere out there. It's going to happen. And so I applaud all your efforts, and I would like to do anything to support what you're doing. So thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kaufman-Gowens?
Thank you. The requirement for the mortgage is that if it's a hundred-year floodplain, you have one photograph here with the goal that eliminates a section, which would essentially eliminate the requirement for that entire population. What impact or the number of homes that we would have as a result of this condition?
That is a great question. I will have to look into that and let you know, because the National Flood Insurance Program actually isn't listing the actual parcel numbers anymore. So we would have to look into that.
Because what we've done here is, for the past fifty years, subsidize other areas of emergencies, the hurricane sandies and the Katrina's and everything else. And somewhere where we've got to be at the top of the list to go ahead and take care of our own, especially our most vulnerable population, which is the largest percentage of the residents that have this impact. The hundred-year marker is our goal. We've got to get to the hundred-year marker so that we can eliminate that expensive cost to the consumers in that area. I know that there were some legislative changes with what Maxine Waters puts together, and she realized the impact of what she started, which then doubled and tripled the premiums for our citizens here, our residents here. And it's appalling. I can't imagine in another business, it takes fifty years and still doesn't conclude anything. I'm hoping that we don't have another retired captain of the Corps that comes to say that they're working this project, which was one of the meetings that I went to, was his last day there. It's, it's, it's humiliating. Why even bother coming? I mean, I, I, as a taxpayer, I don't want to pay for his flight here if that's the behavior that we get as a result. But I know you're being progressive with this, and our, our goal is, we have already subsidized the cost of this, and now it's double the cost even at that point in not having the, the, the results that we need for this community. It is a catastrophic event, waiting for the right time to happen, unfortunately. And we need to be ahead of that curve with continuing to pursue. And it sounds like all we're doing is we're band-aiding. We've had seventeen band-aids the last couple of years on what we're doing in order to do some sort of other matrix to score, and it's still not affecting what we're dealing with, the premiums that are out there, especially since it is a requirement for the lenders. Maybe there's something that can be offered to help in terms of the, the premiums with, you know, the income qualification that FEMA can work with. Maybe there's something that if, you know, your income qualifications meet this kind of, you know, poverty rate, that they can help in terms of offset the costs of the premium for those that are most vulnerable in this community of seniors that can't respond as quickly to, you know, this kind of thing happening. But I'm just trying to think of anything outside of the box, because obviously fifty years in the box hasn't worked. I want to know, too, you had that pamphlet here about the community involvement. Let's have a step-by-step to let the community know what their involvement would be. You know, is it attending the meeting? Is it, maybe we need to do a template of letters that they can just clip their name on to, to say, "I'm, I'm a resident in this community, and my premium is..." You know, they can fill in their name, the amount of their premium, and where it needs to go to for these letters. Let's get a mass going of that, or at least the, the links available for those community members that are imposed with this fee that isn't being reinvested in this community for those policies. I, it's just been frustrating altogether. It is a safety and a sanitation issue. And ninety-five million, that was probably even on the light side. There were some changes made also that we were restructuring this, because when we included the ag, our numbers were too, we didn't hit the radar. And didn't we restructure this so that we're, we're not... our numbers were too, we didn't hit the radar. And didn't we restructure this so that we're not focusing so much on the ag side, let that be the roll-off side? And can you talk a little bit about what that means, and maybe moving this forward a little bit more by giving us a little bit more residential? Can you talk a little bit about that for us, please?
A little bit. So, we have a variety of land uses within the Paharo River watershed. We have urban, we have agricultural, we have open spaces. A lot of this project was where the levees are located, they used to be mostly open spaces and agricultural areas that have been developed into urban centers. A lot of the project got stuck within that agricultural area between the confluence of the Salsapueta Creek and the Paharo, where it's valuable. And so, Councilmember Hurst made a good point. The economics of what we grow here, there's a special calculation that the Corps had to adopt, because it is prime ag land and valuable. We can't always place that before human life, though. So, a lot of, when the Army Corps came here, the same general that had retired that you spoke of, they pretty much gave the County of Santa Cruz and Monterey County an ultimatum. Either take this, where you're going to protect the urban areas to this level, and you're going to have the ag get to this level, and you'll do a local project to bring it to a 100-year level of protection, or we're walking away from this project. That's set in stone, or it's set in motion, that we're moving forward with a 100-year level of protection proposed for the urban areas. Agricultural areas, we're still unsure, because they have the special economic analysis they did for the ag land, so we're waiting for that. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it's helpful, so that, it's sort of like, you know, one step forward, maybe half a step back, and it's just, we need to keep both feet in motion forward instead of having to keep stepping back on this one. Again, to find how we can participate, how do we let the citizens know to participate in, you know, what their commitment is, the capacity of what they can do? You also had a value of 42 million on there. Is that just the City of Watsonville, or is that the four counties down to that level for local funding?
It's actually the County of Santa Cruz, Zone Seven. It's Monterey County Water Resource Agency and City of Watsonville, so it's going to be three jurisdictions that we're looking at. However, that financial model, we're just starting that process this month where we look at the finance structure. We have to look at, well, are we going to look at all four counties based on whether the water can run off of it completely or whether it can infiltrate into the groundwater? So, they will participate to some level in that financing. We also, in terms of the process, how can residents get involved? The easiest one is coming to your Zone Seven meetings. Those are four meetings a year. They're required, and they can come and speak up at those meetings. If you're talking about the process for the local hazard mitigation plan, this is the first time I'm going to be working on developing it, so I will have to look at that process closer for you. I'm happy to. I always post when the meetings happen on the city website, and I realize not everyone has access to the internet, so I'm open to ideas how to better deliver those.
Maybe in our utility bills, especially in those sections where a reminder goes out, it's important to attend these meetings because this impacts you. I think that those kind of very clear, bold messages in how to get to the segment that pay their bills by the paychecks, they're not going online to do it. I think that that communication would be helpful. It's difficult with a once-week paper here, but getting the word out that way as well. But we want to let the community here know that we're there with them to help them in any way we can, and the kind of resources and tools. You also said something about going up and putting something together for either forming a body and having us put something on the ballot initiative. Can you elaborate a little bit more about what you mentioned on a ballot item?
Is that the financing piece? So, we have to go through the governance structure first before we can get to financing. We have to determine, is this going to be a joint powers authorities between Monterey County Water Resources Agency, Santa Cruz County, City of Watsonville? We're determining that structure. That's part of the process that everyone will be involved in determining what's best for our residents and how they should be involved. Once we determine what that governance structure is, we will have the community inputting into the finance. That would be the ballot measure. How are we going to fund this project? How is that going to happen? Is it going to be through property taxes? We don't know at this point. We haven't identified it. That's what the stakeholder engagement that is starting in, I think, the end of this week through the next year.
Well, I think that there already is something on the parcels that have to do with the flood control.
Yeah, so those are the Zone Seven, and so, there's incremental increases to that. It's a CIP or Capital Improvement every year that they raise those rates. This would be an additional assessment.
I just feel like we're penalizing the people that are already imposed with this problem, and we all need to work together on what we can do here, and it is absolutely frustrating that the cost of this project is twice the amount of money based on what the federal side is doing. And do you see that there may be a sense between who's in whose POTUS? Did you think any of that makes a difference in funding anything? I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there.
I'm going to be very diplomatic and say it might. I'm not sure. I can neither confirm nor deny. It definitely helped when President Obama was in office. He definitely was very progressive on these projects, and he had a firm hand with the Army Corps of Engineers. Right now, our current president, through his administrative leadership, is actually taking funding away from the Army Corps for other projects of his. And so, that would not be beneficial to a Paharo River project. We do not score high enough for funding already, so having funds removed from the Corps, I'm hopeful for the next presidential cycle.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, the audience and community, you know what to do. Thank you.
Okay. Wanted to thank you for your report. It was excellent, very informative, and I really appreciate, more than anything, how you're letting people know, you know, that even though this is a big project, big issue to take care of, we all have a part to play. We can all do our part. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. If anybody else has any questions, we can, we'll email you, or we'll let people know how to get ahold of you. Excellent. Thank you.
Do we have any comments from the public or?
Just a report.
Or is it just a report? Okay.
Yeah, just a report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Community feedback on any of this. Keep it up so we can continue to work for you on this.
Okay, and now we will move on to Item 10 on the agenda, Public Hearing, Oursands, and Appeals. We will begin with Item 10A, Consideration of an Application for a General Plan Map Amendment, Zoning Map Amendment, Lot Consolidation, and Boundary Line Adjustment with Environmental Review for three subject properties located at 376 South Green Valley Road, 376A South Green Valley Road, and Zero South Green Valley Road to allow pedestrian and bicycle trail systems along Strew Slough area. And we have with us Director Miriam, and whenever you are ready, we welcome you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I've got Associate Planner Ivan Carmona, who will be giving the presentation tonight.
Welcome, Ivan.
Good evening, Mayor Estrada, and councilmembers and members of the public. We are here to review the recommendation of the Planning Commission to the City Council for the expansion of the existing slough trail system. So, today briefly, I'll be going over the existing conditions, the background procedure, the proposed project, the SECA findings, and the recommendation. So, this is the existing project site. It is made up of the Green Valley Christian Church. The Green Valley Christian Church currently owns these three parcels, the Triangle Parcel to the North, the main parcel where their facility is located, and the Southern Open Space Parcel is the existing conditions. This is the existing general plan and zoning designations for the properties. The Triangle is currently zoned R1, single-family residential, with the main parcel being public, and the green portion is the environmental management portion. So, the Green Valley Christian Church currently owns these three properties, and Public Works actually has an existing trail system and are proposing to expand the trail system along the environmental management zone. This is the existing and proposed trail system that Public Works is currently working on. As you see here, south of Pennsylvania Drive is the existing trail, and the project that we are speaking about today is going to try to accomplish for the Public Works Department to connect the existing slough trail system all the way to the proposed trail system along Loma Prieta and connecting to Airport Boulevard. So, this is the existing conditions, and the general plan, law consolidation, and boundary line adjustment will help Public Works Department implement the trail system. The procedure, as I said, is the general plan amendment, boundary line adjustment, law consolidation, excuse me, and these applications are combined for the recommendation by the Planning Commission to the City Council. This is the outcome of the project. The parcels were three parcels at one point. We have done a boundary line adjustment and law consolidation and rezoned with general plan amendment. As you see, the boundary line adjustment has designated two separate parcels, one where the Green Valley Christian Church is going to be located, and the parcel to the right will be the environmental management open space zone, which hopefully in the future, the Green Valley Christian Church would deal over to the City of Watsonville. This is the general plan, excuse me, the boundary line adjustment with law consolidation. The engineers submitted this application. These are the plans. As you see here, this will be the new boundary line adjustment for the Green Valley Christian Church. They have incorporated the southern portion of the parcel, consolidated it, and we have created a separate parcel where we will be doing the proposed trail system along Upper Strew Slough. So, this project is considered a categorical exemption, because it currently pursuant to Section 15061 of the SECA regulations, this project will not entail any significant effects on the environment, and the establishment of a more restricted zoning district management makes it a categorical exemption. So, the Planning Commission recommendation was considered on April 2nd, 2019, and the City, I'm sorry, Planning Commission recommended approval of the project based on the findings and conditions. That currently concludes staff's report. Does the City Council have any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions? Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez?
Can you explain the public quasi-public portion of this? Are we getting people behind the Willow Court segment to trail anywhere there? Or is it just Pennsylvania all the way up to the streetlight, and where the footprint of this, the green line on 9.1? Are you, that looks like it's off of Pennsylvania, behind the school, and you pop out on the top of Green Valley, so that there would actually be a trail system behind a couple of the houses there?
Correct.
And so, is that where the quasi-public section is?
No, that's the, currently the environmental management district. So, if we go back to this map of the zoning and general plan amendment, where the proposed trail is going to go through is the environmental management district, and it's currently one parcel owned by the Green Valley Christian Church. So, the Green Valley Christian Church is one parcel, and it has two separate zonings, which is public, quasi-public, and environmental management. In order for the City of Watsonville to do the trail system, we had to do a boundary line adjustment in order to separate the parcels. So, this is the outcome right here in this map. We are designating, keeping the public, quasi-public as it is, and the boundary line adjustment will separate the parcels in order to go ahead and continue the environmental management district where we are allowed to do the public trail system.
We're, I'm assuming also that you've notified the people at the end of the Willow Creek Court.
Of course. That's part of the findings and conditions is, before we made the recommendation, we noticed that within 300 feet of the trail system or the property.
Were there any responses with the notices that went out to them? Because if they're going to get a trail behind them, whether they know about it or not, in terms of anybody going back up through that section to come up to Green Valley, I just want to make sure that if there's any comments or anything that needed to be addressed.
I received only one phone call from a member of the public, and she was very happy that a trail system would be going through her backyard.
Okay.
She had no concerns.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Councilwoman Garcia?
Am I understanding correctly that, is it the Christian School, is it giving up, or is it trading?
From my understanding, they are going to be hopefully gift-giving the property to the City of Watsonville. They're not going to be trading. They're going to just...
Just give it up, yeah. That's a sense that I got, and so, I need to commend the school for wanting to do that. But on page six of the staff report, it states that adjacent to Pennsylvania Avenue, there is an existing triangular parcel of privately-owned land that could be used for a parking area for the pedestrian bike trail. So, my question is, who owns that land, and have we begun conversations with the owner?
The Green Valley Christian Church owns that property.
Oh, they own that land, too?
Yes, they own the three parcels.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand that. Okay. And so, are they, they're giving that up too, that parcel?
Yes, the boundary line adjustment is right here, as you see. We're going to be splitting that triangle portion, and part of it is going to stay with the Green Valley Christian Church, and the other half will stay with the EM zoning district, which will be gifted to the City of Watsonville.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Hurst?
I didn't see anything in our report about the finances of this. Is there any, is there any particular cost to us? Or are we expending money on this?
At the moment, the Public Works Department is going to be working on receiving grants to implement the trail system. So, the trail system is actually going to be going into play about 2020, maybe 2021. So, this is the first stages in order for the Public Works Department to establish the proposed trail system.
Good, good. But in the, just in the planning aspect of it, in the boundary line adjustment, there's no, there's no financial consequences to the city?
No.
Excellent. Well, I think anything we can do to extend the trails and connect the trails, that's a big deal. Because if you're on a trail and it doesn't go anywhere, or you have to turn around and go back, it'd be nice to be able to connect the trails. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Do we have the applicant at all here for any comments?
The applicant is the city.
Okay, well, I'm thinking of like Green Valley Christian in terms of, because it affects them.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Just comment, build a trail. Thank you, Valley Christian Church, for hopefully donating the property to the City of Watsonville. Give more work for Ben.
Okay. Now, we will move to public comments. If anyone would like to make a comment or give their input, they're welcome to come and address us at the podium. Okay, seeing no one approaching the podium, I'd like to bring it back to council.
I'll move the motion, Resolution five, six, and seven.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Hernandez, seconded by Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez. And it's the resolution approving a 23rd Amendment to the Watsonville 2005 General Plan to redesignate APN 01622106 located at 376A South Green Valley Road from medium-density residential to public, quasi-public, and a portion of APN located at Zero South Green Valley Road from low-density residential to public slash quasi-public and environmental management to allow the City of Watsonville to develop a pedestrian and bike trail system adjacent to the Strew Slough, and directing changes to be made on the general plan land use diagram. Ms. City Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes. Motion passes, and I forgot to read the rest of it, but it's kind of long, so I think you guys will forgive me, right, if I didn't read all of that? We'll move on to Item 11 on the agenda, New Business, and just, I know we have a lot of folks here who are interested in one topic. Okay, I get a, who's here for the IPM issue, the pest management? Okay, and who would like to see what projects are getting passed for Measure D? Okay, if council will allow me, I think we'll switch so that we could do the pest management. And then, Marie Astor, you will have to forgive us. management, and then Marie Astor, you will have to forgive us for now. So we will move on to item eleven B, consideration of adoption of integrated pest management action plan, and we have with us a director of community parks and services, Director Kaluaquib, and I know I always say it wrong. And whenever you're ready, we welcome you to city council.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Nick Kalubakib, and I'm the Parks and Community Services Director for the city of Watsonville. I would like to introduce Ben Heistain, our Assistant Director for Parks and Community Services, who's to my left here, who will lead us through our presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council, community members. My name is Ben Heistain, Assistant Parks and Community Services Director. Tonight I'll be presenting a integrated pest management action plan designed to reduce pesticide use on city property and investigate alternatives to the herbicide known as Roundup. And this is to, in order to reduce and eliminate the use of this product on city property. The IPM action plan is a collaborative effort between departments to address public health concerns over pesticide use, especially Roundup used on city properties. The city shares the public's concern and is committed to investigating ways to phase out Roundup while maintaining high-quality parks, facilities, and public grounds for the community. Alternative methods of weed control will take more city resources, and evaluating these impacts over a period of time will allow the city to plan for operational and fiscal changes in order to minimize any adverse impacts to overall levels of service in the city's parks, trails, and open spaces. So in order to do that, the action plan consists of three main goals. Goal one of the action plan is to develop cost-effective strategies for weed control that further reduce or eliminate the use of pesticides. Goal number two is to prioritize the safety of city employees and the community in developing best practices for pest control. And goal number three is to create an integrated pest management or IPM program that guides pest control decisions over the long term. But before we delve further into the action plan, let me first give some background on Roundup, because this will be helpful in to illustrate some considerations for reducing use. Roundup is a brand name for glyphosate, the synthetic weed killer patented by Monsanto in nineteen seventy-four. Glyphosate is now manufactured all over the world and readily available for sale under hundreds of brand names. Of course, Roundup is the most famous product, as shown in this picture. It is now the most heavily used pesticide in the world. One point eight million tons have been used in the United States alone, and current estimates indicate that roughly three hundred million pounds of Roundup are used annually in the United States. The Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, analyzes pesticide use nationwide. This chart shows how much pesticides were used in the United States in two thousand twelve, in their last study. This shows pesticides by type, so herbicides on the left, followed by insecticides, fungicides, and so on, across all three major sectors, which is home and garden retail, industrial, commercial, government, and agriculture is kind of the big one. As shown in the left-hand column, in the United States, herbicides comprise the majority of all pesticides used. Not surprisingly, the agricultural sector uses about ninety-one percent of all herbicides, and followed by the home and garden retail sector using about five percent, and the industrial, commercial, or government sector using about four percent. And this varies across sectors, but well over half to two-thirds of all herbicides used are glyphosate based, so they're Roundup or similar glyphosate based products. Glyphosate has dramatically increased since it came to the market in nineteen seventy-four. The introduction of Roundup-ready crops in nineteen ninety-six accelerated its market share. These crops, mostly corn, soybeans, cotton, were genetically modified to be resistant to glyphosate, which offered the farmer a cost, cost-effective way to spray for weeds without injuring the crop. Became very popular with farmers, and today fifty-six percent of all glyphosate is used on genetically modified crops. Ten percent of glyphosate is sprayed in non-agricultural settings for weed control along parks, roads, public grounds, and commercial landscapes, schools. Use in what's considered non-agricultural settings, just as in ag settings, has also increased dramatically since Roundup was introduced, and that's shown by this chart. About twenty-six million pounds of Roundup of glyphosate was applied in non-agricultural settings in two thousand twelve. Roundup became hugely popular among groundskeepers due to it being so effective. One only needed to apply a small bit of it. It moved through the plant systemically to kill the roots like no other product could. It worked, you only had to apply it once, and it was cheap. Competing products required wetting the entire leaf service and only burned the foliage. The plant usually came back eventually. Roundup was further marketed as a safe product with low toxicity, low soil mobility, so safe for the environment, safer water quality, and for budget-conscious businesses and agencies with limited personnel, it became a staple of operations, and this is still more or less true across the board. But there are some recent health concerns. Despite manufacturer claims that the product was safe and dissipated quickly in the environment, various sampling data began finding glyphosate in the environment and the food we eat. Public health concerns erupted once a team of scientists at the World Health Organization classified glyphosate as probably carcinogenic to humans. In two thousand seventeen, the California EPA put Roundup on the Prop sixty-five list of chemicals known to cause cancer, along with many other chemicals, including alcohol, while the U.S. EPA maintained that it was not carcinogenic at the same time, basically. Monsanto sued California over the Prop sixty-five listing, and Monsanto vigorously defended Roundup as safe, citing hundreds of regulatory studies, both within the EPA and international regulatory bodies. However, in two thousand eighteen, the first trial judgment was issued against Monsanto, where the jury found that the Roundup played a significant role in causing Dwayne Lee Johnson's cancer, which was non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. Johnson was a school groundskeeper. He used the product and accidentally doused himself in it on one occasion. Subsequently, in two thousand nineteen, another case resulted in a verdict against Monsanto, and hundreds of similar cases are pending, and more studies are coming out showing the cancer leak and disputing EPA's findings. I think there's about eight hundred Roundup cases held up in the U.S. District Court in San Francisco currently. In response to the growing body of health and environmental concerns, some municipalities and agencies are eliminating Roundup or implementing integrated pest management programs designed to curtail its use. Over thirty cities and counties throughout the state have banned or restricted the use of glyphosate on their properties. Santa Cruz recently banned it until their integrated pest management program is revised, and they're currently in that process. Greenfield recently banned it as well, which made the news, of course. Other cities such as Berkeley and the county of Santa Cruz limits or severely reduce the use of Roundup or glyphosate through integrated pest management programs. These programs establish protocols for pest management in favor of non-chemical techniques when practical, and Roundup is used in limited circumstances for specific applications. So while the city of Watsonville, sorry about that, does not have a formally adopted IPM program, the city has a decade of experience using IPM techniques, and has proactively implemented ways to reduce pesticides through mowing, mulching, landscape renovations, et cetera. Here's a map of the city of Watsonville maintained landscaped areas highlighted in white. It's a little hard to see at this scale, but it just gives you an idea of the areas the city either owns or maintains, so properties and rightaways. Total is eight hundred and seventy-five acres. The map shows parks, parkways, trails, streets, alleys, medians, roadside planters, the river levee, and city facilities such as the, the water treatment plant over, over here, and the landfill over here. While it is hard to see individual areas, just to give you an idea, about a hundred and sixty-seven acres are parks and parkways, three hundred and ninety-six acres are open space, trails, related facilities, grizzly flats is included in that, but it's not shown on the map, and three hundred and twelve acres comprise the municipal airport in that larger blob in the northwest. The features, maintenance needs across the different types of landscape areas varies widely. Within the city, Roundup is used as a last resort after other methods have failed, and it's used after other methods have been tried and to supplement other control tactics in areas where, say, mechanical removal, like hand-pulling weeds, is not practical, such as on street medians. For example, ninety percent of weeds might be controlled through mowing, hand-pulling, or with pre-emergent herbicides, and Roundup is then applied as a spot spray to treat whatever few weeds that come up. City staff do not broadcast spray, nor do we treat large areas with Roundup. Roundup is limited to areas such as along fence lines, road sides, and asphalt cracks, or, as I mentioned, when other methods of control do not work completely, and weeds cannot be tolerated because they may increase the risk of fires, line-of-sight issues, and may contribute to car accidents, or they may damage infrastructure, such as trails or parking lots and other hardscape. Staff kind of roughly estimated that only ten percent of all city maintained landscape areas are sprayed with Roundup, and ninety percent are either mowed or vegetation is controlled through other, other methods, primarily mowing. So challenges eliminating, you know, challenges of eliminating Roundup include high cost and low effectiveness of alternative herbicides, increased frequency of treatment needed coupled with a limitation on staff time. In some areas, as shown in the picture, redesign and renovation of landscape planters that incorporate drought-tolerant plants, drip irrigation, and mulch have resulted in less weeds. And this picture shows Ramsey Park, the front entrance before the skate park renovation, and then, and then after. It was kind of a weedy site, and we improved it. And these, you know, this kind of method of redesigning landscape areas and mulching is a part of integrated pest management. However, the, these techniques are significantly more expensive in time and materials to implement as one might expect. The Parks Division has leveraged more funds for mulch and landscape renovation projects recently through collaborative efforts between departments, between parks and public works primarily, and by seeking grant opportunities. It has also increased the use of pre-emergent herbicides to reduce seed germination and the need for post-emergent control. Through this combination of tactics, Parks has reduced glyphosate use by forty-nine percent in the areas it maintains since two thousand sixteen, which is illustrated by this chart. And it's kind of an interesting chart that shows Roundup use in city parks going back to two thousand nine up to, up to current, and what's interesting is that Roundup use in parks started to decline when the drought began, and this was due to less rainfall, which resulted in less weeds to control. As the drought ended in late two thousand fifteen, rainfall totals started to increase, and growth of weeds also increased, along with the use of Roundup. In order to address this upward trend, the Parks employed IPM techniques mentioned previously, and began using pre-emergent herbicides to reduce weed seed germination, and this resulted in almost fifty percent decrease in Roundup within one year. Parks continued using these tactics into two thousand eighteen and, and the current year, and was and is able to maintain this level of use, you know, despite healthy rainfall totals. While the Parks Department does the best it can within its operating constraints, significant further reductions are limited by budget and personnel constraints, you know, to expand IPM tactics. But this is good progress, and I kind of wanted to, to show that. Overall, in two thousand eighteen, the city used about four percent of the glyphosate used countywide. The city used fifty-seven and a half gallons of the roughly thirteen hundred gallons used within the county. The city expects use of glyphosate to gradually decline through a combination of IPM techniques already being employed and capital improvement projects, such as, for example, the resurfacing of the airport runway, which will eliminate cracks and spots for weeds to germinate. Potential challenges of reducing and eliminating glyphosate. So if the city only uses a small amount of Roundup, then why not eliminate it completely? Let me illustrate some factors that make further reductions and elimination of glyphosate challenging. The first is public safety. Weed control is an important tool to prevent, to protect public and environmental safety by reducing risk of fires, maintaining line of sight and traffic, and minimize the aggravation of allergies and hay fever. Additionally, alternative post-emergent herbicides, even organic ones, require more frequent applications and a greater volume of product applied to achieve the same results, and whether or not they can achieve the same results is still up for debate and is disputed. So this may expose, inadvertently expose the public to more chemicals, even though they may be organic, long-term health impacts are unknown. Weed abatement is used to protect infrastructure such as the structural integrity of the levee, sidewalks, and other public and private property, and to control invasive and noxious weeds. This is sort of a freeway on-ramp picture, can see a cross, a crossing guard standing in a meadow, just to illustrate that increased time and energy needed for weed control using alternative methods without proper planning, and despite, you know, staff efforts to keep up on it, is likely to result in more weediness, which may have an adverse impact on public safety, sort of as shown in the picture. Unchecked weed growth can also increase problems with invasive weeds, which damage infrastructure and habitat. Employee safety. Weed abatement in certain areas such as street medians poses a potential safety risk to workers, along with a potential risk to cars and passersby if workers are using equipment like weed whackers to control weeds out there. Alternative herbicides also may have a higher acute toxicity since some are acid-based and require greater, greater personal protective gear in some cases versus Roundup. Hand-weeding certain areas on such as street medians is usually impractical and can jeopardize employee safety, especially on high-speed roads with fast-moving cars such as Highway one fifty-two and Highway one twenty-nine. City workers need to reduce time spent in these areas to minimize risk. Hand-pulling weeds and medians will require more significant lane closures, it can be done, but well, this will add time, cost, and risk. And these are not admittedly city of Watsonville pictures, but they do serve to illustrate some of our medians, the one on the right particularly reminds me of Riverside Drive and those medians, fast-moving cars and not a lot of shoulder to, to work in. Cost and resources. Roundup alternatives, including organics, are usually must, much more costly, are not as effective, and require additional staff time due to the increased application frequency needed. Other tactics such as mowing, hand-pulling, and mulching are important IPM tactics. yet these also require more funds for materials and more labor. Without adding staff for this purpose, existing staff would be pulled away from other assignments in order to focus on weed control to maintain public safety at a minimum. This chart shows some alternative herbicides, and it's kind of a busy chart. Roundup is highlighted in red, and herbicides are divided into two main categories. There's more options out there, but we've been looking at some, and those are on the chart. Pre-emergent herbicides kill the germinating weed seeds, so they prevent the plant from growing. And post-emergent herbicides kill the plant after germination. Roundup is a post-emergent herbicide. The city has been using pre-emergents with good success. However, pre-emergent herbicides alone only provide partial control. Some weeds still come up and require the use of a post-emergent product. Non-glyphosate products are at minimum double the cost in time and materials due to the increased application frequency needed. Switching to an organic or Amory-approved herbicide such as Avenger, the last one on the list, may require an over three thousand percent increase in costs. In two thousand and eighteen, the city spent about five thousand six hundred dollars on Roundup, which is pretty low. The percentage cost increase with other products is a model based on product data and not actual field experimentation. Truthfully, there is no long-term data, both in terms of cost and effectiveness, for a municipality using alternative post-emergent herbicides that can easily transpose itself as a, as a method or a program to Watsonville. Piloting some other products would allow the city to maintain an accurate representation, excuse me, it would allow the city to obtain an accurate representation of costs for alternatives and discover if they work or not in our community. Santa Clara County conducted a study of weed control techniques in two thousand and sixteen and found that hand pulling and mowing were twice to nearly three times as expensive as spraying Roundup. Most of this increase was due to extra labor involved, however, some of it is due to increased costs for equipment and fuel. While this data is somewhat helpful, the unique needs and nature of our landscape areas will differ from other municipalities. Finally, service levels and aesthetics as a, as a last potential challenge. Maintenance crews have limited, limitations on resources and must balance time spent on weed control in order to attend to other operational duties such as park and trail maintenance, facility repairs, and other development projects and initiatives. While city glyphosate use represents only four percent of countywide use, it is relied upon as an efficient control tactic that allows maintenance crews to balance workloads. And again, it's only used when necessary. Protecting public health, the environment, supporting economic revitalization efforts, and enhancing the city's image and recreation are opportunities, are key goals of operations and maintenance practices within both parks and Public Works and across other city departments. This is a picture of Morrissey Boulevard in Santa Cruz that was taken recently of the medians there. Santa Cruz had been using Roundup in street medians, but banned it in late two thousand and eighteen. Maintenance staff have been struggling to keep up with weeds, and they receive many complaints which they can do little about. In order to maintain public safety such as fire hazards and line of sight issues, staff are spending a lot of time keeping weeds down in the most critical areas. And the city of Watsonville has been in close communication lately with Santa Cruz and other neighboring cities on their Roundup reduction methods and IPM programs in order to learn what they're going through and, you know, what, what they're experiencing and what we might learn in going down this road ourselves. While some practices can be modeled in other cities, each municipality will have unique needs, so what works elsewhere may not work here. Furthermore, cities across the board are experimenting with alternatives and do not know what the most effective control strategies are. And these are control strategies that work in each community may, you know, are intrinsically tied to that community's particular budget situation, which of course vary widely across communities. The city will continue to work with other agencies and local experts in devising an integrated pest management program following the approval of this action plan. But what is unknown, and what is, and the reason why we are proposing to pilot alternatives and embark on an IPM study is because we don't know the impact of reduction or elimination of Roundup on service levels and what works best for Watsonville, and we'd like to investigate that. Integrated pest management is part of the solution, and the city is committed to furthering reductions and considering eliminations on glyphosate use through the development of an integrated pest management program. IPM is an ecosystem-based strategy designed focused on long-term prevention of pests while minimizing risks to the, to human health and the environment. By using a combination of techniques such as biological, biological control, cultural control, mechanical control such as handweeding and mowing, and chemical controls such as pesticides, by using a combination of these techniques, the need for pesticides are reduced. Rather than simply treating pests as they are noticed, an IPM approach considers environmental factors helping the pest thrive and aims to create conditions that are unfavorable for the pest. We'll outsmart them at their own game. City staff wants to be able to give the council accurate information so it can move forward in making a policy decision about eliminating Roundup. We feel responsible for providing this information to council, and piloting alternative practices will allow us to do just that. The IPM action plan proposed will identify, identify costs for long-term weed control by investigating ways to maintain current service levels while reducing or eliminating Roundup and possibly other pesticides. Through the information gained from the pilot study and with the help of a consultant, a working IPM plan will be created to guide pest decisions over the long term on city maintained and owned property. Here's the main bullet points of the IPM action strategy. The first stage of the proposed plan would be to develop pilot areas to investigate alternative practices, identify fiscal and operational impacts of reduction or elimination at certain locations. River Levee, Bridge Street, Pennsylvania Avenue Bicycle Path, Ramsey Park, Marinovich Park. Those five. These locations were chosen due to their unique characteristics and practices employed, if successful, can then be replicated onto similar landscape types. While the city only maintains a small portion of vegetation along the river levee, the flood control district staff have indicated a willingness to experiment with Roundup alternatives in collaboration with the city. In this situation, the first priority, of course, would be to maintain the structural integrity of the levee and maintain Army Corps certification. So the scope of, and the extent of piloting alternatives within the river levee itself is, you know, will be developed in collaboration with county staff. Pilot study areas number two will use the following practices for weed control, and these are just some of the alternative methods that we'll use, but they're not, they're not limited to this list, there are other IPM methods out there. But some of them are mulching, the use of pre-emergent herbicides, alternative post-emergent herbicides, non-glyphosate, mowing, hand pulling, public and posting, public posting pre and post-treatment, so before and after treatment. Here's a map of the proposed study areas. Probably familiar to everybody here. They're highlighted in black, so the, the medians and the bike paths are a little hard to see. But we've got Pennsylvania, Ramsey Park, Marinovich Park, the Bridge Street medians, and the city maintained sections of the river levee in collaboration with county staff. And this pilot study would be about taking specific areas that have different weed issues and see how we can develop IPM techniques that will work in different sites. The data we learn will be used to inform ways to further reduce or eliminate landscape on similar landscape types. The reason, again, we need the pilot study is because we do not have sufficient data to recommend methods and associated costs to eliminate the use of Roundup. Both Public Works and the Parks Department have been successful in dramatically reducing use over the past decade. Unfortunately, there is no one method that works for all the sites we maintain due to their unique needs, topography, location, regulations, and concerns for public and employee safety. For the same reasons, it's not necessarily practical to adopt models from other jurisdictions because of their unique makeup and size of maintenance areas along with other variances such as geographic location, soil content, weather patterns, monetary and staffing resources, et cetera. Because of these variances, there are few best practices in terms of alternative weed control methods that can be applied industry-wide. Our pilot will allow us to find the most effective and efficient combination of methods that we will investigate use of in some of our most challenging sites. And these will allow us to then provide the council with information needed if and to what extent these methods should be repeated at other maintenance areas. The third bullet point of the IPM action plan strategy is to develop an IPM policy for all pests that serves as a working document for pest control decisions long-term. Due to limiting staffing resources, it is recommended that we hire a consultant to facilitate a process to develop our IPM plan that will incorporate our best practices, local and regional expertise, and community input. Our consultant will help lead and guide this process as well as to assist in determining costs for implementation. And implementation of the action plan would begin in July twenty nineteen under what we're proposing. If council approves this action plan, staff will provide recommendations for funding through the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget approval process. Estimated costs of this pilot alone are, with, with the consultant are estimated at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. After about one year, we will bring findings and recommendations for further reductions and elimination strategies to council, which will have other fiscal and operational impacts, most likely. So in closing, staff recommends the city council approve of the proposed integrated pest management action plan. Staff appreciates the council and the community for supporting this effort to come up with a long-term, sustainable solution to protect the health of our community, the health of our environment, and provide the high level of service this community deserves. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Ben. That was, that was great. Excellent report. Councilwoman Garcia?
Ben, I first want to say that I really, really appreciate all your responses to members of District Five. When they contact you, you immediately answer them and you take action, so thank you for doing that. But I have some questions. I'm confused, and I need some clarification. We're being asked to approve an integrated pest management action plan. Yet, on the staff report on page five, you're saying that in a year, in year one, with the assistance of a consultant, city and county staff, UC extension, and community members, an integrated pest management plan will be developed. So you're saying we're going to adopt one, yet on page five you're saying we're going to adopt another one. And, and I'm very concerned, I'm wondering, why didn't you come to us tonight with that, all those stakeholders giving input to a plan? And especially, community involvement, which is what I had requested in a previous city council meeting. And so I'm really, really trying to understand, is this really an integrated pest management plan?
Well, this, this would be the, kind of the forerunner of an integrated pest management plan. This would be an action plan to basically embark on this process and engage stakeholders in a fashion that you mentioned.
So, so why weren't stakeholders involved right from the beginning, right from the get-go?
We are starting to engage stakeholders and other agencies and other local experts in this process. The, one of the issues is that it's such a big project that it takes some time to develop. We've, we've, we've been looking at alternatives and having kind of informal discussions throughout the past few months and have realized that this is a huge deal. And to develop like a full working IPM policy takes some time, and we're not prepared to reveal that yet because we don't know the impacts of making some of these changes such as integrated pest management techniques. There will be significant impacts on, on the budget and personnel resources, and we want to be able to look at that in order to have what we learn inform what goes into this final IPM plan, which we hope to develop over the course of a year.
My next question. In the goals you state that you will suspend Roundup in high visitation areas, please define suspend for me.
Within the pilot study areas, and let me go back to that slide. Within the pilot study areas, we will suspend use of glyphosate.
And for how long? Six months, three months, a year, two years? For how long?
For the course of this action plan, which we're proposing to develop over a year. So after one year, we will bring recommendations and findings, things we learned through conducting this pilot to city council for consideration of further reduction measures on glyphosate or other pesticides. So we, we want to be able to come back to you with accurate information and accurate costs, so then we can then move forward on a more robust citywide plan that would encompass all city maintained areas.
So just to make sure I'm understanding, for example, Ramsey Park. For Ramsey Park, for one year, there will be no Roundup used?
That's correct.
Okay. My final question is, you keep talking about cost of using alternatives to Roundup, and I want you to consider comparing those costs to the cost of possible lawsuits.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yeah, thank you, Ben, for the report. I know it takes a lot of work, a lot of effort to put something like this together. But I, I do have some concerns. In your presentation, you kind of misguided a little bit on the one twenty-nine, or I'm misguided either, which way you may clarify it. But you mentioned one twenty-nine and one fifty-two. Now, those are state highways, and I don't know if we as a city are maintaining those, or is it the Caltrans that maintains those?
We, we maintain a significant portion of it within the city limits, and Caltrans maintains areas outside the city limits, so closer on the way to Highway one, for example, on Riverside. They maintain those areas, but we do maintain a portion of it.
Okay. And the other thing is that you, you've kind of led us to understand that you are, you guys already actually have kind of like an IPM process going. Because in your, in your report, you've shown us that you've been reducing the use of glyphosate. And so you're gonna, we're gonna, you're asking us to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to something you're kind of already doing, to study the best practices? So that kind of doesn't make sense to me, why we're going to want to spend a year to study. That's something that you guys have been implementing on your own. We know there's, there's a cost for labor. But, but again, if you're looking at the well-being of a community and you're looking at the well-being of the employees of the city of Watsonville, I would always weigh to the side of their well-being. And to the versus using a chemical that you're going to have to use it again every year. You made it kind of sound like, oh, you use it one time and weed's gone. But actually, you use it continuously throughout the whole year, every year. So basically, Roundup isn't really killing the weed, it's just deterring it a little bit at a time. bit at a time. And so we're going into the risk of, again, exposing our workers to that percentage of liability, to saying, okay, now we have a medium that has a little more weeds, and we have to close a lane on Highway, on 152, say, on the medium, and slow traffic down. Well, you know what? We have traffic that's traveling too fast in our city of Watsonville, and that would be a blessing in disguise to slow traffic down, you know? And so it's kind of like, you say it's going to cost us more, but I think in the long run, it'll cost us, the city, a lot more if, again, if there is a lawsuit or liability held against us. And again, I have to weigh in the favor of the health of the community and the health of the employees, and I thank you for your report, but I think we've gotten to the point of ready. The amount of chemical that you're using for Roundup, glyphosate, is really minimal, so if we eliminate it, it's really not going to be that big of a significant impact, because we've already been in that process of eliminations from understanding your report and comparisons to other cities. Thanks.
Councilwoman Parker?
I too want to thank you, Ben and Nick, for all the responses, because you've had a lot of them from District Seven, and so, and you've honored every single person and taken it very seriously and gotten back to them. And I know it's not an easy discussion to have. I want to echo some of the comments that previous council people have said. I see that, okay, I felt like it was really disingenuous of you to put medians the way you had them in there, because we don't have medians like that here in Watsonville. And I do understand pulling weeds, I get it, I do it, and I think it's great that we have workers who pull weeds rather than spray pesticides. I think it's healthier for them and it's healthier for us. It's going to cost us more, and I understand that. I'm a little bit leery about consultants, and when you say $50,000 in a year for someone to develop a plan that sounds like you guys are really on top of right now, and there's just some components to it that need to be fleshed out, could you talk to me about that a little bit?
Well, let me just say that, you know, the city and the Parks Department, the Public Works, we share the concern about Roundup, and we've been employing alternative techniques for a long time, you know, because of, those concerns have been out there for quite a while. So, you know, the recent lawsuits, it's not surprising. We've been looking at alternatives to curtail use, but we've kind of hit a, what I believe is a kind of a wall, because the reductions we've made are due to kind of, you know, a lot through leveraging grant opportunities, one-time grant opportunities that may or may not continue over the course of the year, so we've been lucky in that regard. We've been able to go out and mulch different areas, do landscape improvements, but we don't have the knowledge to really go further with these reductions. I mean, we are, as a staff, very progressive and committed, and a lot of us have backgrounds in landscape maintenance and pest management, which have informed a lot of the recent practices. But I think we've kind of hit this wall where if we were to say, you know, we've already reduced by 49% in the parks. If we were to further reduce that, it would take, because we kind of leveled off in the last couple of years after that initial push of using pre-emergents and mulching. We've leveled off for the past three years. If we were to get more aggressive with reduction strategies, it would take more. It would take not just what we're currently doing, it would take more exploration of other methods. So we, and it would take more time to manage weeds through mechanical methods. It would take, you know, for example, additional staff, additional temp staff, to go out there and weed whack, to hand-pull, because we don't want the medians to get overrun with weeds. I mean, we kind of take pride in our city, and we've been working hard the last few years to improve all the medians. If you look at Bridge Street, you look at Aloney Parkway, and certain medians such as the Riverside medians and Highway 152, those are on our radar as well, and those are next for beautification. And we really want things to, you know, on the one hand, you know, represent where Watsonville is and where it's headed, and kind of, and support all of the great work that's going on, both in terms of economic revitalization, and this may sound cheesy, but, you know, landscape maintenance has impacts in a whole different bunch of areas across the board. You know, and I mentioned public safety and employee safety to kind of give some of the, you know, maybe illustrates the top concerns in people's minds. But what we want to do is continue this trajectory in a more formalized way. We want to, we want to have a, we already maybe have some integrated pest management techniques in our head, in our bag of tricks, but we don't really have a policy to be a working foundation for the future. City staff may come and go, we may not always have kind of the current culture here, but if we were to develop a plan, that would allow us to invest in the future of, you know, safe and effective pest control techniques. And city staff, I mean, we kind of are able to help guide the process a little bit, but based on conversations with UC Extension advisors and experts that really know this stuff, and talking to, for example, the county and how they develop their IPM program, it takes a lot. I mean, it takes more than, you know, several meetings, it takes a real focused effort, it takes perspectives and knowledge from other communities which a consultant will have, because they're working on this issue across many, many cities. And so this is a good opportunity, I think, to tee off this crisis moment we're in with Roundup, and just further commit and really invest in, you know, the future of how the city maintains its areas. And I think the benefits of, the benefits for the community, the community must be safe, and we must maintain our areas in a safe way, and we want to do that, but we don't want to proceed without a plan. I mean, we want to develop a nice plan so we don't, you know, lose control of the progress we've made, and we don't go backwards. I mean, this is sort of a good moment, I think, to move forward. I may sound somewhat partial, but I'm really not, I mean, I just, I kind of, I'm concerned that if we were to eliminate Roundup right away, there would be a lot of impacts, and, you know, such as more weeds and public safety impacts, and I'm concerned about that. I don't know to the extent that that will happen, but in talking to other cities such as Santa Cruz, it's already a challenge for them. I mean, they're really struggling over there. They're working on developing an IPM plan, but they haven't gotten there yet. So I don't really want to be in that position either, and so that's what, kind of, why we're, that was a long way of answering your question, I apologize, but...
A lot of interesting points. I do have a question about the airport, because I understand medians and parks and everything else, but what's the importance? Explain a little bit about how you do weed control at the airport, because that's that big blob, right, on another one of these slides. Sorry, Councilman Hurst. Didn't mean to call it a blob.
Let me invite Airport Manager Rayvon Williams to take that question.
Poke him.
Good evening. Rayvon Williams, Airport Director for the Municipal Airport. We, there's a concept called FOD, Foreign Object Debris, and it could be a very serious problem for jet engines. So most recently, two years ago, we had a test of the cracks in the runway. We have 70,000, 75,000 linear feet of cracks, and these are, it's just the nature of a runway that was built in 1986, and over time, as the cracks grow, weeds grow up. And so we have qualified applicators, employees, who are qualified to apply Roundup, or whatever chemical is required. Over the last two years, we've gotten more effective and efficient in how we do that, and we've cut our Roundup usage by about 75%. So that's where we are at this point.
You know what that 75% represent, I mean, or the 25% that's left, how much does that represent?
We look at it in gallons, and I think we reported to you guys, at one point, we were up to like 50 gallons of Roundup in the course of a year, and we're down now, and it's a function of the machine that we use. I mean, originally, it is applied by hand. Effectively, we have a Kubota cart, and we've come up with a special airport-specific rig that has the chemical in it. Imagine the airport is effectively six miles of runways and taxiways. The runway itself is 4,500 feet long, the parallel taxiway is 4,500 feet long, the crosswind runway is 4,000 feet long, the parallel crosswind runway is 4,000 feet long, and then you have all the connectors. And so when you look at that over the course of a year, and the weeds ebb and flow with rain and material, but when you have a $20 million jet, I mean, everybody loves the jets and they bring in economies and fuel, but the fact is, we have a fundamental requirement as a part of the airport discipline to maintain a safe operating environment. And that operating environment, and it's just not weeds. I mean, we have squirrels and animals and bird strikes, so we deal in an environment that is hazardous in many terms, but when it comes to this particular plant-based herb, herb or herbicide usage, it's important that we're able to control it. So with this new machine, we, and we do it on a continual basis, we have a schedule, just like we have a street sweeper to sweep the taxiways of dirt and bricks and rocks that come up. But when this first came up, we worked with Ben and with Nick, and we went back and looked at our numbers and found that over the years, we have reduced it just by being more efficient. I will be upfront with you, I don't envision in the short term, and we're going to follow their lead, I mean, wherever they go, we're going to use it, but we have to mitigate. I mean, your comment about lawsuits, that's the other end. If we don't do our job, the lawsuit, and I'm not making any light of a park or anything like that, but if you want to talk lawsuits, you talk about a $60 million Gulf Stream that goes down, and the NTSB's report is, the runway environment was unsafe. I don't want to be standing before you trying to come up with why we didn't mitigate for that.
So you said 50 gallons, and then you're down 25%? So that's like 12.5 gallons or something?
No, we're, yeah, yeah, we're down to, that was the last calculation that we looked at.
And that's over the course of a year?
Yeah, I mean, we don't spray, I mean, we're not spraying this, we don't have parks and large green areas. I mean, it's 330 acres. Most of the area that we have for weed abatement and control is, once again, the runways itself, the taxiways and shoulders, and much of the stuff we can handle just by tilling. But once again, when we start tilling and we're turning up rocks and we're breaking off edge of concrete and asphalt, we're just making the problem worse. So we try to be very effective and very focused on our use of the equipment.
So you're also talking not just the runway itself and the cracks along, but all along the edges of the airport?
Oh, not only that, but when you go out to Ella's and you're sitting there and you're having your drink and you're looking out on the ramp at the beautiful aircraft, and you look across that large expansive concrete tarmac, as they call it, that WWII ramp, if you look closely, you'll see there are cracks in it. And when those aircraft crank up out there and they start ingesting that, we have to be all over it. And so a lot of it, we do by hand. I think they did make a point that I would like to draw your attention to, and I'll be talking about you in a couple of weeks. We've determined that those 75,000 square feet of cracks, based on the recent rain, are 90,000 square feet of cracks. But we have a 24-hour construction project that's going to start on May 9, and we're going to be out there for six days, and when it's over with, we think our Roundup usage will go dramatically down, because we're going to be routing and filling those cracks and improving our surface. And so that's what I'm really looking for, and that's my commitment to Nick and Ben and Matt about how we're going to try to reduce the use of that chemical by improving our infrastructure. I'd much rather have a concrete, a efficient, structurally sound runway than have to be out spraying weeds. I mean, that's the win right there, is having a runway that doesn't have weeds. Weeds are my enemy.
Thank you. That was informational. I'm going to stop my questions now.
Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez, and then Councilwoman Hernandez?
Thank you. So what percentage is the overall use the airport has versus your parks and your medians and things like that? Because it sounds like there's a lot more mass of use at the airport where we're not having the population and the households nearby. So can you give me a gauge of what the difference would be on where your usage falls?
Yeah, well, total in the city, in 2018, we used about 57.5 gallons, and that was spread across parks, Public Works, and the airport.
But it seems to me like, Rayvon, did you say like 12 and a half gallons or so? So are you using about a third of the overall use at the airport then? Is that about right on the number of gallons?
And I have that data, and I could get that to you, but it's sort of in that range, and I think a lot of the Roundup use is because of the airport cracks, which is going to go down after they resurface. Parks use is about 15 gallons a year, Public Works is about the same, and I think, you know, airports are right in that 15 to, you know, 25 range at the moment.
And we've actually just approved the second pass on the consent agenda about the levy on the parcels that are on their tax, their property tax bill that says lighting and landscape maintenance and assessment for those districts. Have you done anything to figure out maybe the cost change as a result of making some of these changes for the weed abatement?
I think that's an important consideration for, you know, especially as we look at, you know, future assessments in the LMADs, because what we use will impact costs, and that's something we look at through the pilot study by looking at similar areas like the Bridge Street medians and areas that can be extrapolated fairly onto the LMADs, such as Vista Montaña, which is medians, kind of rideaways and areas in front of homes. So similar types of landscape areas we can use to inform, you know, future efforts in similar sites.
Just as an example, I think that for Vista Montaña, it's over $500 a parcel that we are assessing, $402 to over $500 a parcel, that would then have a fiscal impact if we go back and do this math on the assessment for modifications or revision. So some of it we're collecting, so we have to figure out how much more that it's going to take from, the consumers we're collecting from that policy that we're approving annually. But one of my big questions here is, we live in the world's prime agricultural productive valley of organic farmers. Why aren't we tapping into what their resources and their knowledge is on weed abatement if they're doing it organically? I would think that that would mean that these chemicals, they found alternatives, and what abatement programs that they may have that we may not have, we don't know what we don't know, but has a conversation happened with our farmers that are organically growing their product in this valley?
That conversation hasn't happened yet, and I think that's, we would definitely, I mean, that's a great idea to engage the farmers. You know, what works on farms is going to be a little different than what works in an urban setting, of course, but there's definitely going to be some parallels, and we will engage whatever local farmers are interested in participating with us, but to begin, we would go through the UC Extension and work with their advisors and maybe get some leads on organic farmers we might engage, because it's certainly helpful to collaborate with as many people as possible on this, because there's many different perspectives out there, and what we lack right now is kind of that working group to come together and discuss these things. I think cities in general are needing to come together and discuss this particular issue, but that consensus hasn't kind of happened yet, and this pilot study would look at engaging, you know, we'd form a kind of a task force and have meetings and bring in county staff and different experts. of a task force and have meetings and bring county staff and different experts to facilitate the process along, and, and including members of the community, for sure.
And, and I sort of understand, you know, we have the full set of seasons, and it sounds to me that you're wanting this year time because of the full set of seasons with what rains we're going to get and how, how the seeding happens in that entire process. So I understand you're, you're looking at a, that kind of a window for a segment for the trial period. Is there anything short of that, that you could look at for the pilot, where you can then get back to us, that you've worked with the consultants, that we've had some time at the community room here about discussion and alternatives, that, that doesn't take an entire year for us to try and implement? Can we do something within a shorter window of time and see that those components of some of the questions we had up here can be worked through, so that we can maybe look at a plan that's more, a shorter time period for results than a year?
Yeah, we ideally would like to study the full range of seasons, because
Understood, yes.
The, you know, the fall season's a little different than the spring season, although there's some parallels there. We would, we would want to bring back any findings and recommendations prior to, you know, the year's budget process. So if there are budget changes, we could implement them. So I think the, the staff report might say, you know, no, you know, no later than June of two thousand and twenty. And we would try to bring it back a little bit before that. And so we could incorporate whatever changes there are into that process. So I think we're, we'd be looking at realistically, if we were to implement July first, about, you know, ten months study time, and then another month of writing the report and coming to council, something like that.
The, some other things that I have here is the, the, the implementation of, of how you're putting it on with regards to, is it in the morning, there, there the air drift, things like that, that you're doing that may make it more effective for where it needs to go, instead of having an air drift issue for some areas? And then also, you, you mentioned something about signage of some sort. Can you elaborate a little bit more about what posting you're talking about, how that would work? How long you would do it beforehand? Is this going to be, we're, we're spraying tomorrow versus we're spraying? So let me know a little bit about signage and the communication of, of when you're doing this and when you're going to use a signage.
The, the drift issue is kind of an issue that is, is a problem for everyone that uses pesticides. And anyone that sprays, such as, you know, within the city, we're licensed applicators. So we don't spray if it's like over five miles an hour, because of the potentiality for drift. And if we follow all the, the regulations, those, those kinds of things are, are covered under Department of Pesticide Regulations for certain practices. So we don't, we don't spray when there's a potential of drift. We stop. I mean, usually we'll, we'll, if we do spray, we'll go in at seven in the morning or six and while the, while it's calm and there's no wind, and usually by nine or ten, there's already enough wind to, to, to stop. And, yeah, so we, 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 we definitely keep, keep that in mind. What was the second?
The signage.
Signage, signage, sorry. So signage, we would, so right now, we, the, the current regulation is to label whatever pesticide is used on the application equipment. So if the, the staff have backpacks, they'll have a little sign that says what chemical they're, they're using. But we've gotten, you know, comments from, from concerned residents that when we do spray, they're not informed and, and, you know, they're, they want to know when we're going to spray. And that's, that's a totally valid comment. The issue with, with doing that is that because we move around to different sites when we spray, posting in all locations would be pretty, you know, a little bit impracticals, because it would take lots of time to go out there in advance and post all these, all these signs at every, every site, since a lot of the sites are discontinuous. However, through the pilot study, we'd, we'd like to explore, you know, how to do that and provide more public noticing that is what is required by law. Sort of go above and beyond in that regard to give people the peace of minds, to allow them some advanced notice, and then afterwards notice that the area was sprayed. Because some people don't, you know, we recognize some people only visit an area every few days, they may not know something that happened, you know, the other day. You know, but this would be part of the study, to, to study those impacts and what we would need to expand posting throughout all the areas.
Yeah, I know that there's methalbromide, when those, when that was being sprayed, there were notifications in the process used. So there, there's, there are things that are out there that we need to reach for more in terms of a, a plan that has already been effective for some of the other chemicals and notification processes. So I'm just keeping those in mind in terms of putting together a full plan that is a really integrated plan.
Councilman Hernandez?
My first question was about the pilot study, and I'm noticing that some of the more popular parks, like the Callahan Park, are not on there. And, you know, there's a lot of children that play out there. Same with Frannish, actually. You know, I take my dog out there to Frannish Park. You know, I, I, I would like to see, you know, that part of the pilot. I don't think, you know, folks want their pets and their little kids out there in those areas. I'm just wondering why that, those two were omitted from the pilot study?
Well, no, no particular reason they were omitted from the pilot study, but we wanted to be careful not to get too carried away with, with the pilot locations, because there is a, a cost that go along with that. And we don't want to take off more than we can chew. We would proceed with the intention to definitely expand whatever works at Ramsey, whatever we discover works through the pilot to Frannish and Pinto and, and, you know, every community park. I think that would definitely be our intention. But through the pilot study, we could examine what works and what doesn't work. So we're not in a position where we're overextending or overpromising or, you know, what we can do. Because it takes a significant, a significant effort just to pilot within these five locations. And so we want to include those sites and, you know, eventually, after we complete the pilot study after a year, you'll see recommendations and findings, you know, in order to like roll it out with all the parks and all the sites, you know, including those ones. But Ramsey's kind of a good testing grounds, just because, we chose it just because it's heavily visited park, just anecdotally, that we know of, and has a lot of facilities within it. There's just ball fields and sports fields, turf areas and community centers that, that has it all. So whatever we learn at Ramsey, we can then roll out to the other parks easily.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I think it's critical that, you know, I think Callahan does have, you know, concentrated amount of kids on that. Not the grassy area, but the area where the playground is at. And it was just kind of, I was concerned that it wasn't on this pilot map that it, that's here. You know, I, the other thing is, is, I know we keep citing cost, but, you know, and, and it's, what was it? Do you have that page that has the costs of the Roundup and the alternatives? I'd like to ask the city manager if, you know, there's a way that we can work this out to cover the cost.
So Councilmember Hernandez, I appreciate that question, because I think embedded in our conversations tonight, and, and give credit to Nick and Ben and our parks team for really doing a very thorough job in terms of talking about potential impacts. Because I, I do think a key piece of this is to not assume that the two options the council has before you tonight about whether there's an immediate ban or we do a, a longer process, will not have impacts on the level and standard of service that we provide. And I think that's part of why the team tonight wanted to provide some examples from some of our neighbors as to what some of their medians look like, to provide some examples of that. And there may be good reasons that the council would support that, given the risks that we know are involved with the use of Roundup. But we need to go into this acknowledging that we have a very limited parks team. Our parks crew is, is probably a quarter of the size that Santa Cruz has. And as you saw from some of the examples tonight, despite the larger size and the additional crew that Santa Cruz has, they are struggling with being able to keep up with it. So that begs the question of, what would the cost be associated with, with rolling out this program? And I think the shorter answer, the short answer is that we don't know yet, until we spend the time to do a more comprehensive and deeper dive into how can we more effectively maintain the high standard? And you can hear a lot of pride in Ben's description of the work that we're doing and the, the pride that our parks crew has and the, the level of, and standard we maintain our medians and our parks. We don't like getting complaints that those areas are not being maintained at the level that our community expects. And currently, Roundup is a component of that. So then the question is, how can we move forward in a way that allows us to continue, to continue that work with alternatives to Roundup? And I think there's a process to that, which is part of the, part of the proposal tonight. Now, the council could, as part of the budget process that we'll be bringing forward in the next month or so, there's going to be a lot of priorities that the council needs to weigh through with the limited resources that we have. And this is one of those considerations, of course. And so the chat we had with, with our internal team as we were preparing for tonight's discussion was, we're about to bring the budget to the council in the next, in the next month. And I think that that would be a good time for us to talk about resources and additional needs. But we don't have a direct answer to it yet, not knowing exactly what would be required, how many additional staff we might need, whether permanent or temporary, to be able to help inform that decision, which is part of the, part of why there's a proposal tonight to allow time for us to, to make a more informed decision around that.
I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comments and our input at this moment.
Good evening. Thank you for having this topic on your agenda. I'm Al Beatty. I'm a vice president of the Paharo Adult Village, which is adjacent to the River Levy Park. One of the problems with that park is part of it's in the county and part of it's in the city. And this has always been a problem when we find out it's been sprayed with Roundup, as to who sprayed and when did they spray. This year, it was done by the county, and they didn't stop at the county line, they went all the way down to Bridge with the spraying of Roundup on both sides of the levee. That park, if you are familiar with it, is used by a great number of residents, both seniors like myself and young children. I met one yesterday that was about two weeks old, being carried by his parents. Lots of dogs are walked on that parkway. When the spray is on the plants and you don't know it's there, the dogs wandering in the grass, even the first day while it's wet, that's fine, it's an oily material, right? It's got oil that sticks it to the plant. The next day, when the dew's on it and the dogs are walking in the grass, the dogs are now getting contact with the, with the weed pesticides again. Many dogs are allergic to that particular product. So even if you don't stop using it, you need to get together with the county and decide to post it, so people know that it's been sprayed. Our, our position as the HOA is we have two hundred and forty-seven residents, we're willing to work with, with you folks or the county or anyone that wants to work on how to eliminate the problem or how to post it. We're working with the agriculture department, with the farmer that's next to our homes, and getting messages out to our residents about the spraying in the, in the farm fields as well. So I have a letter that I believe was sent to both the city manager and to the city council, but I leave it with you guys, I guess, as well. And I hope this pilot project turns into being a better project. When people do it at home, they know where they sprayed it. When the county or the city comes out and sprays along the park, people don't know it's there. And it's, and when they do find out it's there, it's when the plants are dead. That's two, three weeks later at least. So the noticing is really kind of an important part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, my name is Barbara Anders, and again, I'm not actually a city resident, but I have a stake in this too. Because I come into the city with my granddaughter a lot. And I don't know, pilot study just sounds, it sounds like just more studying of things that we've known about. It, I, and I understand, I, I can hear the pride in your voice, and I could see the results of, of the team that you work with. And, and it's, I've noticed it over the last, I've been a Watsonville resident for twelve years now. And I could see the results from when I first came. It's beautiful. But this Roundup thing, we've known about for a long time now, it's hard to, to change. It's hard to change something that is working, seems to be working so well and is so easy and so cost-effective. But change we have to do. And I'm kind of of the mind that, you know, when, when you talk about roads, well, build a highway and then we'll come, you know? It's like, stop the Roundup and we'll get creative. And I know that we can do it. And we're missing, like, like with all these rains, we're not nimble. We don't have, you know, the, the city needs to be nimble in terms of being able to hire somebody on, you know, temps or whatever, on a spot with a bit of experience about digging weeds out when the ground is moist by the roots. We all know what happens when you just cut your weeds down, they double down on the roots, and they're harder than ever to get out by the roots, so you have to keep cutting them. That's, that's one way of managing it, but another way is to actually get in there and get them out by the roots. That's the old-fashioned way. And I imagine if you talk to, you know, UC Extension people, they'll tell you that. Well, we have people go in after the rains. So I just think we have to do it. Just bite the bullet and do it. There's so many, there's so much bad stuff that comes of Roundup. And as far as the airport, same thing. My weeds and my cracks in my driveway come up by the roots after the rains. We need to be nimble. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to reiterate what both speakers ahead of me said. When I was in the board at Paharo Village, I convinced our gardener to stop using Roundup. We're not overrun by weeds in our clubhouse. I convinced the gentleman who operates or manages our sixteen garden plots to stop using Roundup. We're not overrun with weeds there. When I have weeds along Bronte Avenue, which is asphalt that connects to the concrete curb, I use vinegar. Guess what? It's a dollar and a half for a gallon. You spray it on, on a sunny day, and the weeds are dead in three days. And as she said, if you use some water, or there's been rain recently, sometimes you could reach in with my three fingers, and I've been doing this since I was seven, my father was a landscape gardener. You reach down, you pull twenty, forty-five degree angle, and you can get most of the root, and it doesn't grow back for weeks. Folks, we can do this. We don't need Roundup. We certainly don't need another hundred and twenty thousand dollar consultant, for God's sakes. Let's use the money for creative ways to replace Roundup. And I wish we had, in our warehouse out here, we need some vinegar, and we need to invest in vinegar. Vinegar works, no one ever died from an overdose of vinegar. We don't die from vinegar and oil salad dressing. We don't, our, our pets aren't killed by vinegar. If some vinegar splashes you, you're not going to have to rush to the hospital. My God, folks, wake up. Let's use some of the things that our grandparents and our great-grandparents use for great remedies. Vinegar works wonders, and we don't need a ridiculous consultant for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Let's save their money. And as the previous speaker just said, let's be creative.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Estrada and city council members. My name is Jennifer Khan. I've lived and worked in Watsonville since nineteen eighty-five, and I've owned a home since nineteen eighty-eight. It'll be paid off in a couple of months. Woo-hoo! And I'm a thirty-eight-year veteran teacher. I work at McQuitty School, I've worked there for thirty-four years. I started out with Ari's mom, who's ninety-six years old now, so I'm one, I'm the one who's worked there the longest. So I live here, I'm a, I'm a city member, and I'm going to retire this June. And I belong to the Safe Eggs, Safe Schools Association. I'm also a union rep for the, for the, for PVFT. I went three years ago to speak to the PV, PVUSD School Board about banning Roundup, which they did. I went, and also all my colleagues here, talked to them. So if they can do it, you can do it. I always found it ironic when we were using Roundup, that they would come with their hazmat suits and their mask and saying, oh, it's safe. It's like, oh, yes, real safe, that's why you're in hazmat suit and mask. Yeah, real safe. you're in hazmat suit and mask." Yeah, real safe. And the little notice that they put one little note on the gate, which most people don't go in, and really small print and hard to understand, and so it was not good. So I'm glad that they're not using it anymore. My great-grandkids and great nieces and nephews come to visit, and I don't want to take them to the park, because they're one-years-old, two-years-old. They're pulling up the grass and they're eating it. And if it's been sprayed with Roundup, and we tell them, "No, no, don't do that," but they do it anyway. So we need to stop it, and we need to stop it now. I remember hearing about the ads back in the 1940s, 1950s, "DDT is good for me." Well, they found out DDT was not good, and it was banned. So now they've found out the same thing about Roundup, so we just need to stop using it. We know the dangers of it, so we need to stop. And we need to stop now, not in a year. And you need to notify the community when chemicals are being used, with more than just a little sign that no one sees. And you also need community input into the integrated pest management policy. We all need to have a say. I plan on being here for many more years, and as a community member, I expect better of you. The late, great Maya Angelou said, "When we know better, we do better." Well, now we know better, so we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm a teacher at PVUSD. I teach third grade. I've been here for 10 years. And my colleagues and I have always suspected that pesticides and herbicides are contributing to the learning problems in our students. That's why I joined Safe Ag Safe Schools and also got active in my union. And two years ago, like she talked about, when we went to our district, they listened to us and they saw how dangerous it was, and they banned Roundup. And we have seen, it hasn't been a big problem with weeds. Maybe there'd be good people to talk to as well about discontinuing the use of Roundup. But it is high time that we, as a city, do the same thing. Many other cities have done it. And I like the idea of, let's just go for it and deal with the problems as they come, because there are other problems that are much more dangerous. When we talk about the cost of what it will cost the city to use alternatives, we really need to think about the health costs, the human costs, the cost to our children. Our students deserve herbicide and pesticide-free spaces to grow, for their bodies to develop, for their brains to develop. And we need stronger language in the IPM, including eliminating the use of pesticides in the city. We need to remember that a year-long test is just too long. It's unnecessary. And I know that for $120,000, that would pay, if you were to pay teachers, that would pay for three first-year, full-time teachers. I was thinking maybe, I don't know how much mowers and weed whackers get paid, but if you paid them like a teacher, you could have three of them working full-time for a year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city employees, anything I say is, with all due respect to Ben and Nick, who are sincere workers and have done a great job so far, thank you for posting the alternative, the Watsonville IPM Action Plan, rather. Although the action plan is well-written, it has some, it bears some scrutiny. There's only been incidental, not inclusive, public input. Many members of the public have experience in non-toxic, organic methods of weed control, including members of the Community Agroecology Network in Santa Cruz and Safe Ag Safe Schools in Greenfield, Watsonville, and Salinas. As we know, IPM weed control without herbicides relies on careful monitoring and understanding of individual weed species and cycles, and interrupting these cycles before seed production. This is more costly and labor-intensive, and pesticide use in legal marijuana production is carefully monitored by the state. A percentage of the revenue generated by marijuana farming and dispensaries could be channeled by the city into offsetting the additional costs of eliminating Roundup in the city. Furthermore, in the introduction, the IPM Action Plan mentions that much of the data concerning the potential negative health impacts of Roundup, but it's difficult to put a dollar value on the advantages of protecting public health and safety. It's difficult to put a dollar value on the advantages of protecting public health and safety. Although eliminating Roundup on city property may initially cost more out of pocket, citizens would no longer be exposed to an herbicide that courts have ruled is a significant contributor to cancer in two individuals so far. One, a pesticide applicator in Benicia, and another, a homeowner using Roundup for poison oak on his private property, removal for his private property. Thousands more are waiting their day in court. I believe it's actually 6,000 people, Ben. But there are many examples of agroecology in practice in our valley already. For example, Lakeside Organics not only deals with beds and row crops, but also maintains farm roads pass, rights-of-way, and frontage roads along public highways without herbicides. Watsonville can incorporate and follow their best practices. There's a lot of expertise here in organics. Our city can and should be a non-toxic, pesticide-free sanctuary someday. Spray drift and fumigant gases enter neighborhoods like Bay Village and so on. Thank you very much. I had a lot more to say, but thank you for your time. And these comments, I believe, all of the city council meetings, members, city manager, and Ben and Nick already have. Thank you very much for your time and effort, all of you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and city staff. My name is Fred Mendlin. I've been a biodynamic gardener for over 50 years. And one of the first things that I learned when I first started learning as a city person, trying to learn about plants and gardening, was to give up the word weeds entirely. It's a pejorative that we don't need, and it also misrepresents what those plants are actually doing. They contribute a lot as volunteers. That's the proper name for those plants. They're the ones that grow there because they want to, not because we decided to. And so, as a gardener, what we do is to focus, and it's the same as true in agriculture. You focus your energy on the cultivars, the plants that you want to direct your energy to. And in the same way, I think the city is kind of flipping things around by focusing, as so many public agencies have, on pest management and an integrated pest management plan. Pest is another one of those words that we don't really need. What we need is a landscape enhancement plan. We need to really focus on how we can direct our energy towards making this even more of a beautiful city, as we know it is. I've lived here for 20 years. I've taught here for 30 years in Paharo Valley Schools, currently teaching at McQuitty School. And I know that we can do this. It just takes the energy and the people power to pull those weeds, to put the burlap sacks down, to experiment with mulch in ways that we haven't even thought of yet, that I'm sure there are biodynamic, organic gardeners in this area who know about how to do that. And the city can be informed in a process that people would participate in without an expensive consultant trying to encourage them to. They'll step up, and they'll come forward, and they'll share their expertise with us. And I know we can do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for everything. It's late. I'm a school bus driver, but I recently retired after 15 years of driving for Paharo. I'm in District 7, and I wanted to say that there are now, as of the 20th, 11,200 and counting cancer lawsuits. And that the most recent one that was won was by a couple in Sonoma County who got $80 million. But the fellow who was the gardener before that, he got over $300 million. And so, this family that, this couple that were spraying on their property, were told in 2015 that it was perfectly safe. And we know now that it is absolutely not safe. There's lymphoma and leukemia that is coming out. And so, I wanted to say that it's very imperative that you quit the use of glyphosate and other toxic substances like it immediately and permanently now. That's what I would like. And also, I don't think you should pay the consultants $50,000. I think you should start an ad campaign for the citizens of this town to tell them how deadly this substance is. And you have full access to integrated pest management programs now, because many California cities, including Arcata and Napa, are not only banning glyphosate, they're banning all toxic substances, herbicides, rodenticides, on city property. So I think we can set a good example. We can educate our public. We can keep everyone safe. And we can do away with 45 gallons of glyphosate a year. We can definitely have the manpower. So I'd like to see us all do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, it's almost already 10 o'clock. Wow. Oh, good night. Yeah, my name is Takashi Mizuno. This is my second time to speak about this issue on behalf of Bay Village Homeowners Association. I talked about this issue in the annual meeting of the Bay Village Homeowners Association last year, and they agreed with me to talk about this in the city council meeting. So this is my second time. And we ask and we demand the city to discontinue use of Roundup. And I'm also retired organic farmer from New Jersey. We moved here from New Jersey about five years ago. We have an organic family farm, about 130 acres. And our family has owned the farm for over 200 years. And we stopped to use the pesticide about 60 years ago. And since that time, our farm has become paradise for birds and insects and human beings. And I have been always curious, after I moved here, this place is called Paharo Valley. Paharo means bird in Spanish, right? But I don't see so many birds in the city, in the towns, in the places around here. I want to see so many birds coming and enjoy, to live and to enjoy with us in this city. And one of the first steps to do that is just to stop using pesticide, Roundup. And oh, thank you very much. And we'd like to very much work with the city staff to make the best resolution, best resolution, to be present to the city council. And we'd like to work with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Kathleen Kilpatrick. My notes just disappeared off my phone, so I wasted that 15 minutes on the bike riding them. But I've already submitted some fairly detailed comments a couple of times. And I think, I really appreciate Ben and Nick, what you've done so far. I think this report made me, it made even more clear to me that you're already using IPM in your practices, but you don't have a procedure. Now, I worked for the school district a lot of years, and as I think I said before, I wrote a lot of procedures. And sometimes you just have to write up what you're doing, and that becomes your starting procedure, and then you figure out from there how to make it better. I like having an action plan, but it's a plan to have a plan. So I think we could have an IPM out of what's already been done. And there are lots of models of basic plans that don't actually involve the specific techniques. I have a whole pile of them here, and I have one that was done under the auspices of the EPA that explains integrated vegetation management and the procedure and the pitfalls to start an IPM. Unfortunately, it's no longer in print, but I'm happy to make copies for you at no charge. And I think we need to strengthen the plan and put some things in it that are missing. One is that people really do want notification. They want to know what's being sprayed around them. And I think it is possible to do that. And I know you talk about the standards and the tolerance and all that, but what you told me, Nick, is that people don't complain that much about weeds. But I think you might find that if they knew what was being sprayed in their parks, there would be complaints about that. So we don't know yet, but posting is essential. People in our community are exposed to a lot of chemicals already from agriculture, and they deserve to know what's being sprayed around them. I think, since I worked all those years in healthcare, I'm a little leery of consultants also. You don't ask the drug rep what to prescribe for your patient. And I've looked at IPM plans that are on the web now, and most of them are done by people that look to me like they're glorified field reps. And, you know, you don't ask the field rep what to do to save your crop unless you're expecting to use chemicals. So it would have to be the right consultant, the one that has a real integrated pest management mindset. And most of them don't. So I'm pretty leery. We have a lot of expertise in this valley. There are organic farmers. There are gardeners like us, although our garden is not a good example that we control because we love those invasive species, because they grow like crazy. But, you know, there are other ways to approach it. And I submitted an edited version of the plan, and I think you should take a look and think, how could we make this plan the beginning of an IPM and start now? Don't wait a year. A year is way too long. So I would advise you to reject the action plan and make it better, make it a starter IPM, and then bring it back to vote on, because this is really not what we want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, council, mayor Estrada, and all council members. Thank you, staff. My name is Saraid Martinez. I am the organizer with Safe Agriculture Safe Schools, SAS. We're a local coalition with different members. You saw a lot of us here, but we have also a group membership in Salinas and in Greenfield. So I'm really happy to be surrounded by people that know a lot about just pesticide in general, and how to, like, again, live in harmony with different type of plants and animals. So I'm really happy to be here. Thank you, staff. I mean, I think the report is great. I definitely appreciate the intentions or further develop and actually complete the integrated pest management plan. And again, like, I know you've been very responsive, and the fact that you are suggesting some testing ground to start this, or to continue with this practice that you're already doing, to me, it seems like it is really a step that is needed to just eliminate the use immediately. Many cities have done it, the school districts, counties. LA County just put a moratorium on it recently. The city of Greenfield stopped it. Again, the mayor said something very powerful, said that you can't put a price to safety. So really encourage all of you to really consider immediate ban. I think really $120,000 can be spent in alternatives and doing something immediate when you see the problem. Again, I think you saw, you heard a lot of our members, we want to discontinue immediately of Roundup. Definitely notify the public in a way that is visible and that people really know. And also, definitely community input. I think the city has I think the city has some collaboration already on what it's doing with, with different nonprofits and works, so I think we can replicate that. In addition, we can't wait a year. A year is too long, and you have all the facts now. So I urge you to act. And definitely, we want to see stronger message on the IPM proposed plan that we have. There is language of, like, maybe intention of eliminating or reducing, but the reducing is, is, is in there. So that, to me, tells me that maybe we're not exploring a full elimination. We've been working on this since two thousand sixteen, according to the report, and it's been reduced by forty-nine percent. It's been two years since that, forty-nine percent, sorry. And we don't use a ninety percent of the city. So I do believe that the ten percent would not be the a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, unless my math is, is really wrong. So again, again, I see and I encourage everyone to really look at the facts and to vote on the immediate suspension and adoption of the IPM plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come and address the council on the current topic? Okay, bringing it back to council. Councilman Mendez.
It's getting pretty late. I did have some, some further questions, though. Did Santa Cruz use a consultant or the school district?
In speaking with City of Santa Cruz staff, they engaged with a consultant called Blankenship and Associates, and they went through an RFP process and selected that one. And I believe they're out of Davis.
What'd they learn?
They're currently in that process.
They can't tell us, or?
Well, they're, they're.
They're with us.
They began this process, I think, only in December with hiring the consultant, so they're engaged in it right now. And I believe that what they're looking at is about, they already have some IPM policies within different divisions, so they're looking at evaluating what they have right now. And then the next stage is, from my understanding, is to move into looking at Roundup and pesticide reduction strategies similar to the, similar to what we'd be looking at in this pilot study proposal. And so they're engaging a consultant to help facilitate a very similar type of project on their end.
And my second question is, is it possible to do sort of the way the state, and I think the county also does, the sort of adopt a park or adopt a trail kind of thing where we get groups like maybe this group SAS that would volunteer to adopt the levee to pull the weeds twice a year or something like that, or if they pay if they want to? Would something like that be possible at our parks and trails?
Yeah, I think that's a, you know, great idea, and I've, I've seen that in other communities. I read a, for example, Marin, City of Marin's IPM report, where they were reducing Roundup, and they have all, you know, communities, I mean, I mean, volunteers out there pulling weeds and are coordinating workdays. So we could definitely do that. It just takes, you know, it takes some coordination with groups and, and the willingness of outsiders to come in, I mean, outside groups to come in and work on city facilities. And it might be hard to achieve, like, the regularity with that needed to rely on completely, but I think what, it would be great to supplement city efforts.
I mean, if they can do twice a year, that'd be excellent. You know, you got the high schools that need community hours, and PB High, Watsonville High, Sierra, social service organizations. You know, there's a lot of groups that would be willing to adopt a park, you know, actually put a name of their organization that says, "We've adopted this park," you know, "and we're going to clean it." It's just a thought, you know, they, they came up, because, you know, the state does that with the side of the highways, right? But I, they get, I think, money to pay to clean it up. You know, looking at this, for me, I would rather just do an all-out ban on parks and trails. You know, let's do the, if we have to, you know, do a project, let's do the project on the airport or something. But I think all-out ban is probably the way to do it. It's just my thoughts, you know? Whatever we enter, we're going to enter, we're going to have to pay for anyways, whether it's this hundred and twenty thousand dollars on top of whatever we're going to pay for Avenger, you know, the, you know, the, the cost we're going to pay for this study is going to be twelve years of buying Avenger. I can pay for Avenger for twelve years. I don't know, it's just, I got mixed feelings about this plan, or about the, the cost of the, the consultant, whereas we can just start to begin the, the process of the elimination of Roundup. Just my thoughts.
Mayor and council, I did want to clarify one point as you're considering options here. I know the hour is getting late. So the hundred and twenty thousand that's being cited here, I want to make clear that fifty thousand of that would be intended and slated for the consultant's work. The remainder of that would be used towards the implementation of the pilot study techniques. So a variety of other alternatives are also built into that cost. So when you're looking at the total amount, I wanted to make clear that about fifty of that would be used towards the consultant. That cost would be shared between the general fund, our utilities, and the airport, given that all those operations touch components of this.
Councilwoman Parker, and then Councilman Gonzalez.
Excuse me. Right when the microphone comes. So, you know, I'm new to this process. I've been a teacher for thirty-two years, but I've only been a councilwoman for a few months. So I'm going to speak from both experiences. I was a school teacher, and they sprayed right outside my classroom with kids walking around. And then I was a school teacher, and then they put up a notice, and then they sent it out to everybody, "They're going to spray this weekend, don't bring your kids to the school." But after they sprayed, people brought their kids to the school because they didn't know, because they didn't leave another notice, they sent it out. So I was really happy. I'm at Bradley Elementary School, and we're surrounded by agriculture, too, and we have enough issues with drift that, that they actually stopped spraying in the Paro Valley Unified School District with glyphosate. And, and so I'm, I'm at a crossroads here. I, I think what you guys do is great. I was on Parks and Rec, that's where I started as a commissioner, and I, you do unbelievable work with such little budget, and I, I can't say enough about it. So maybe we talk about that during budget times. But I don't see a reason, and I, I do understand, and I do have, I'm not going to say misgivings about the airport, so I almost feel like we need to protect the airport until they finish their repairs. But I, I would like to suspend glyphosate throughout the city, and maybe there's a compromise in here. Maybe we, and I do agree with one of the speakers that says, I think it was Kathleen that said, "I think you guys got an IPM already started." And sometimes you have to start with what you have and then move forward. That hundred and twenty thousand that you broke down, and fifty thousand was the, the, and seventy thousand was the increase in manpower and all the other different ways in which, is that correct?
That's correct. Materials, equipment, supplies.
Right, to change it up, okay. And that looks different to me, listening to that, you know, understanding that you do kind of have an IPM started because you already have implementation of where, you know, worst-case scenario, we go. I don't want to wait a year either for this, but I'm, I'm willing to compromise on it. So I guess I'm, I'm making a lot of comments, but I'm also talking to my fellow council members and the more experienced ones in this. I, I would move to do something, but here's the, here's the question, and maybe the city manager can answer this for me. I would reject these plans as is, as a, as a council member. And with, with clear insight into what we would need for them to bring back for me to be, say yes to it. And I don't know if that's the way we do it, or if we just jump in and we say no, and then we vote and move forward, and they're left holding the bag and having to come up with a plan. So I think I'd like a little guidance on this from...
So let me, let me take a crack at this. The council has before you a few options that are included in the staff report that I would describe as being in a range of what Nick and Ben are describing of, as a, as a phased approach over the course of ten to twelve months, to giving the council the option of doing an immediate outright ban across the board, and, and then pursuing, getting a more formally established IPM in place. And of course, the council has the authority to make adjustments to any of these recommendations or modify any of these recommendations, and so we welcome that feedback tonight as well. I think part of what's being, what's being proposed tonight is in the spirit of a lot of the feedback we've received from the council tonight about, we have a wealth of knowledge in the room tonight, we have a wealth of community partners we could work with on this. I think there's a lot left to be learned on that front. Ben mentioned work with the University of California's Pest Management Program as one example of that. And we want to do that work, and we want to engage with our community partners, and that, that takes time, so that's part of the, that's part of why this process recommendation is here. I've also heard feedback tonight about interest in maybe wanting to modify what areas we're including in the initial band, the initial band, and maybe expanding that a little bit to include Callahan Park, maybe Franch Park, some of the other areas that the council might have more concern about. So that's an option as well. And you heard from our airport director tonight that he has some immediate concerns about maintaining the large airport property until we get some of the improvements in place, and wanted to be able to retain this as an option in the meantime. So you have that information for you as well. So one approach could be proposing some changes to the recommend, to the recommendation tonight, with some of the, incorporating some of the feedback we've heard from the council. The other would be, you know, pursuing one of the alternatives that we've also included in, in the report. And so I think that's, that's my best description of options you all have this evening.
Okay, then I'd like to actually make a motion then. So I'd like to make a motion to ban glyphosate in all city parks and...
Trails.
I'm sorry?
Trails. Parks and trails?
Oh.
Finish your motion.
I couldn't hear the words. I was like, what? Okay, all city parks and trails and medians, with the exception of the airport, at this time.
I'll second that motion.
Can I, can I clarify that motion?
Sure.
Would that also include proceeding with working with a consultant, including the community outreach on developing the plan?
Yeah, I didn't include that in it. I felt like that's a further discussion that we could have after the fact.
I would, I would concur with what we've got here for the motion on the table, and perhaps include the return of what we need for the, the update of what progress is being made, so maybe figuring out the timeline of coming back to council with how things are progressing as a result of that. And I, I concur. The, the airport doesn't have as much of the public access and the significance, and so I, I think that that's in a sense, that that's practical for the carve-out for this pilot process that we're going through, until we know such time that Rayvon's got things under control that he needs for his mitigation. But we're missing a huge void of suggestions from the professionals in this valley. And I want to know that you're coming back to us with that knowledge of how to integrate what they know that works for them. You know, we, we've got the organic farmers that are here. I, I mean, our, our resources are, go knock on the, the Farm Bureau. I, I think we've got a lot of examples of the, the plans from what our, our community has provided you with, and I think you need to look to rehash some of that, come back and visit it, and, and let us know about what kind of mitigation efforts on the, the motion are, are taking place and what you're doing with it. And I think also the posting, even if it's at the airport for mitigation, we need to make sure that the posting is there when there is spraying that's being done at the airport.
I'd be happy to add posting at the airport as a requirement, along with it, so people will understand if they walk onto those areas that it's spraying. So if, if someone else wants to add, and they have something to for the consultants, I just wanted to handle it in two separate manners, because I felt like it needed to be hashed out a little differently. I want to support your IPM and the plan.
Councilman Gonzalez, I know you're, you're hand there for a little bit.
I've been waiting.
Okay.
She made a motion, she seconded it really quick, and I'm like, wait a minute.
First of all, a quick comments. I appreciate all the hard work that the Parks and Recs do. It just goes to show with the little bit of manpower that we have in the city, the big effect that the workforce does in comparison to the City of Santa Cruz. So I commend you guys on your hard work. But on, on your motion, I, I, you know, I have a big problem with just hanging on to this, and, and, and sometimes it's kind of like that person that's addicted to the cigarettes and, and says, "Well, I'm just going to smoke a little bit of it, and, and then I'll just check it out and see what happens," versus just saying, "You know what? Forget it, let's, let's throw this away, because we already know it's bad." And, and so why are we going to continue to, to use something in that fashion? So I'm, I'm really not in favor of putting the airport on a special pedal, pedestal. He's also, he, Rayvon has stated that in just a few days, he's going to be doing some major, major work on the airport, which is going to greatly reduce his problem and cracks. So he's kind of mitigating that process, and he's always going to have weeds that he's going to have to mow, and so it's going to be a constant thing there. And so I'd rather see just an overall, complete ban on the, on the product, the glyphosate, and, and, but just allocate at least a seventy-five thousand dollars. We were talking, no, well, eliminate the fifty thousand dollars for the consultant, because I don't think we need a consultant. I think the professionals that we have around in our valley could help us out, and, and use the remaining funds, and let them use those funds as they need to, to be able to reach out and find other products.
Airport or the parks are possible.
Thank you. I'm going to give my two cents real quick, too, as well. Again, I'd like to echo what my colleagues have said, Nick, Ben, you guys do amazing work, and I know how much you love this community, and I thank you for that. I would like to echo what Aurelio said. I, I can't really, I can only support a ban on this, or discontinued use. And the only reason I, I sort of talk about this is because I believe in prevention, and even at four percent, that's, that's still a lot for me. And this, this is coming from somebody that has a lifelong disease, and, you know, I wish I could spend one day without type one diabetes, and I can't, you know? And if I could prevent one person from developing cancer, then it's worth it, you know? And they say, "You save one life, you save seven generations." And so, you know, if people want to complain, if city staff gets upset a little bit, that's fine. They can send, they can email me their complaints, and people don't have to vote for me in four years, but at this point, I can only support a ban on, on these, on, on the behalf of the city. So. Councilwoman Garcia?
I would, I appreciate that you even made a motion, so thank you for doing that. But I would hope that you would consider amending it, because I, too, support what Aurelio and Paco said. I can only support is a, it's a full ban. The reason being is, for me, the priority of the safety, of human safety for our employees and our residents, both children and adults, it's a priority. And I think it might have also been a priority for the Paro Valley School District, because they banned it in spite of the cost. They said, "Okay, it's going to cost us much," because we know it's going to cost us more, but they have it at priority, and they're paying more. I'm a member of the Housing, Santa Cruz County Housing Authority, and we, as a board, have decided we, we banned using Roundup, and our landscapers are costing a little bit more, but that was a priority for us. We know they're going to have to pay a little bit more. So I, as I say, I support what Aurelio and Paco said, and I'm hoping, Ari, you would consider amending your motion.
If I may clarify one point, part of the request tonight was not, was not a request for a budget allocation this... budget allocation this evening, but based on the council's direction, as part of our budget process, we'll spend some time further refining that cost and bring that back to the council for discussion when we look at the full budget, if the council would be willing to consider that.
Councilman Hernandez?
I got a question. So on the form here, when we're doing this, we're also going to ban the use of other pesticides that are alternatives, but still pesticides nevertheless and chemicals, right? We're going to only use inorganic, I mean, organic, sorry, organic.
Pesticides.
Pesticides, yeah, natural.
No, the motion was glyphosate.
Because what's the other one?
That's Roundup, but there's others.
There's one more that's also dangerous that is
Oh, yes.
People are using as the alternative to Roundup.
I think the current motion on the floor is glyphosate. And I don't know whether Ben or Nick can elaborate on whether there's been others that have been included in that.
I think that that ends up being a policy decision of the council. I think we've outlined at least some alternatives through the previous presentation that we could use in lieu of glyphosate. I think if the council chooses to ban all other types, I think that's something that we leave to the council to decide as well. I'd just like to make the point because I think I've been really quiet tonight and jumping a bit to say something. So I've got a few notes that I'd like to kind of get out if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to reiterate again that I think, you know, Ben and I have put a lot of thought into this report and really, you know, at the crux of everything that we've recommended really is the health and safety of our community. I think that when it comes down to it, that really is the most important thing. And I think that the way that we've reduced our use of Roundup over the years, I think really is a demonstration of that commitment. And I think what we've done so far in terms of how much we've eliminated the use has really been the low hanging fruit or the low hanging weeds, if you will, right? So it's been the easy stuff that we've been able to kind of systematically make changes to the way that we do things so that we can eliminate the use of those pesticides. It's that last 10% that provides a lot of challenges to us because of the reasons that Ben outlined in his presentation tonight, you know, everything from health and safety of the public to employees, to infrastructure and so on and so forth. And so the action plan that we have before you tonight really kind of proposes two things. The first, in terms of the pilot, is to really help us figure out what the costs would be to implement some of these changes at some of our pilot sites. Because at this point, you know, the cost of doing that to keep our service levels the way that they are today is really unknown. So that's really the purpose of that. In terms of developing the IPM, which is kind of the second outcome of this action plan, we propose to do that through a consultant. One, because with our limited bandwidth and many other priorities, you know, to go through a public process, I mean, I think we all agree that that definitely should be a part of the development of this plan. It's just very time consuming. And so with the use of a consultant, they could really help us accomplish that goal in a faster timeframe. And the second piece that we really would like for the consultant to help us with is to help us determine what those costs are so that we can come back to the council with a recommendation for how we further eliminate or reduce the use of glyphosate throughout the city. So just want to get those things in. Again, I think, you know, we are really committed to working with you and with the public to further reduce or eliminate our use of glyphosate and we just want to make sure that we are doing so in a way that provides our community with the best service moving forward.
You know, I wasn't finished with my comments, but, you know, I just don't want to be in the same predicament that big agribusiness was in when they phased out DDT and they just replaced it with methyl bromide. And then they phased out, they're still phasing out, I think, methyl bromide and they brought in methyl iodine. You know, it's going to, I want to make sure that we get rid of all the inorganic chemicals as well, not just glyphosate.
Councilman Hearst?
You know, I don't think we should put a price on public health. I think that we do always need to protect the public. But there is a price on weed control and the public needs to know what that is. And I don't know how we get to know what that is unless we follow staff's recommendations with their plan. I think the staff has heard the will of the council, it's heard the public, I think it feels the trends in the community. And I think we need a measured way to get where we want to go. I don't think the public wants to have weeds growing everywhere. I've heard those complaints before and that's one reason that we fund the Parks and Rec and weed control throughout the city. So if we want to prevent ticks and spiders and rodent habitat and, I remember riding on the levee with a couple of friends and somebody ran into a big patch of goat head weed, that little thistle-like thing and popped their tires and, you know, there's a safety element in weed reduction about fire and health and, my dog got a fox tail up its nose, cost me about 200, 300 bucks to get the dog treated. All those things are sort of preventable, but like Mr. Midland said, who's left, it's going to take a lot of energy and time and manpower and we don't know how much that's going to cost yet. So my personal thought is to go with staff's recommendation and move in the right direction and find out what the cost of these methodologies of digging and pulling and hoeing and more mowing and all this stuff is because it's not going to be free. And we've got 875 acres, as I heard, that we've got to manage. And we need, like any good landscaper or any handyman or tradesman, you need a lot of tools in your toolbox. You can't just use an axe for everything and a shovel doesn't work on everything either. And so I think we need to take the wisdom that staff's put into this and move in the right direction. And that's my hope. But I want to say I'm really glad that the public is fully engaged and the council is fully engaged on this. And I think there is, we saw the Farm Advisor just the other night, and I think that there are solutions and ideas there, but all of them are going to cost some money and we need to know how much that money is. The tax, we owe it to the taxpayers to have full disclosure on that.
Can I ask another question? We have Watsonville Wetlands Watch, have they weighed in on this as well? Can you share with us a little bit of their insight?
Yes, we work closely with Watsonville Wetlands Watch and had a discussion with them about the IPM action plan and the issues around glyphosate use. And of course, just like us, I mean, they don't use it and don't recommend using it as a sole tactic, but they do understand, because they're in the industry of stewarding natural areas, they understand how difficult it is to control weeds and some of the adverse impacts that they can cause with invasive species and the impact invasive species have on habitat. So I think they have the approach and Jonathan, I don't think Jonathan's here, but, you know, I think he would repeat that, me on this, that they're, they support integrated pest management techniques, they support multifaceted strategies with pest control that don't rely on any one method, certainly not any one product. And I had conversations with Jonathan about this particular plan and he thought it was a reasonable approach. And, you know, I think they kind of share our issues because they also do maintenance and I think that they kind of, you know, have faith in our abilities and our intentions as well.
So what you're saying is he's supporting the process that we're going through here with your recommendation?
Yes, certainly.
Could you repeat the motion?
To ban glyphosate on all city parks, trails and medians with the exception of the airport and requiring posting on the airport when spraying. And then Councilmember Kaufman added that to return with a progress report on the result of the ban.
Okay, I'm ready to vote.
I think we were taking it in two steps. One was about the items here about where not to spray and the carve out, which was the airport. And then I think the second was to have the discussion about progress report as a second motion.
Right. The progress report is a second motion?
Right, having a progress result for the results of this come back sooner than waiting the full year on this. And I think that that was sort of left in discussion about what the turn time is on that progress report.
Do you need a second for that?
You need a second for that?
Second motion? I'll second it.
Well, I think that we have to vote on the first motion.
We have to vote on the original.
And then the second.
We have to vote the original.
Yeah. And then the second item to put the motion on is request staff to come back.
Can we just do one motion at a time?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the resolution that's on here first?
Well, I think we're
We have a motion on the floor.
We've got a motion on the floor from Councilmember Parker and
Second.
And a second.
By Kaufman.
Kaufman? Okay.
Unless there's any amendments, suggested amendments or changes to it.
Okay, and I'd like to actually talk, speak to that. I don't see that an absolute ban, especially for the airport, I just want to safeguard what's going on at the airport. It could be, I could amend this to give a timeframe to the airport because they're in the midst of this huge, what, six day, 24 hour kind of plan that's going to happen? Rather than just pull it all out, okay. No. I'm going to amend the motion to ban it, ban glyphosate across the city in all parks, city medians and trails.
And?
And I'm going to remove the airport as an amendment.
So the airport having it or not having it?
Banned everywhere except for parks, city, medians and trails.
That's where they're going to be banned?
Right, across
All out banned, basically.
All out banned in the city of Watsonville with no exceptions.
Including the airport.
Including the airport.
My concern is what we've got for the safety at the airport, which isn't a public access and that we have them come back with what their plan is going to be if we have a phase two to include them. That's sort of what I was waiting to hear back on the airport for that part of the carve out.
Can we have the airport manager come and speak on it, see if it's doable?
Sure.
They can do the phase out.
The project that we have coming up now, so clearly, and please understand that from the airport's perspective, we're on the same page, as I said, we're aligned with Public Works and their view of the herbicide. From a timing perspective, on May 9th, we're going to go through this process. One of the two runways will be completely surfaced. I was just sending some emails back and forth to the staff. We think that's going to cut our weed problem by at least 40%. But we still have the other runway and it doesn't, it's not going to be resurfaced until September. So if I had to make a request and I had to ask for time, I would ask until that runway was done.
That's reasonable.
Yep. That would be my request because what's going to happen is we're going to do, we're going to do this one and then we're going to come back, we're going to come before you in May, right in the, right as soon as we finish doing this construction, we're going to come back to you and say, hey, we want to go out to bid to do the Crosswind Runway. We expect to get the grant in August. And then we're going to do the same thing we're doing to this one now, surfacing it. Now you're going to have 4,500 feet of runway resurface, cracks gone away, 4,500 feet of parallel taxiway resurface, cracks gone away, 4,000 feet of Crosswind Runway resurface, cracks gone away, and 2,000 feet of parallel taxiway, cracks gone away. And then as the note I'm sending now, and I've copied Matt and Alan and Nick, and I've sent a note to my staff saying, we have to come up with an immediate plan to determine how we're going to handle the weed problems that we have on the ramps and in and around the hangars. We have pilots, I mean, the pilots, pilots aren't going to want to be going into their hangars and knowing that Roundup's being sprayed by there. I get it, I'm one of them, I wouldn't want that. And so we're going to have to look for a way to do it. I don't have an answer. I'm going to be looking to these guys for help. I'm going to be going out to other airport managers. Weeds just don't grow at Watsonville. But I haven't taken the time that they've taken. And so I will be going to them and I will be going out to the airport managers forums and saying, hey, how do you guys handle this? Because, you know, there's got to be other ways. But I would just request that you give us time to continue our current effort now, continue the effort in September, and then I'd be more than happy to come back to you and report the progress.
So, gosh, it is. And 45, and I'm on my second amendment to my first amendment? Okay. That was excellent information to have. I want to put a timeframe on it then.
Yes.
And so the end of September is it for the airport. And I'm going to go back and, you want to tell me how to do that? Rescind my second amendment.
I would just say that you had the original motion.
The original motion.
And it was seconded by Trina.
Yes.
So typically, there would be a motion to amend that. We'll be, we're all here together. We can, we're okay if Trina agrees with your amendment, but she hasn't yet. So there is no second amendment yet. So you're still on your first
First amendment.
Which Trina has not accepted. If, once you formulate that
Okay.
And Trina accepts it, then there'll be an amended motion and that's what you'll be voting on.
Okay.
Ready to spit it out?
Yes.
Let's go.
So the amendment would be that the ban on glyphosate would include all parks, trails, medians
Medians.
In the city limits, except for the airport.
At which they have until?
With notices posted that they have until and through September of 2019. And at that point, the entire city would then be glyphosate free.
I'll approve the modifications to the motion.
Do you want to have the date or do you want to say once their runway is completed?
Yeah.
In case they don't get it done by September?
Okay, yes, when it's completed. Thank you, Beatrice.
Yes.
Talking if there's two weeks over.
Yeah.
So now there's a motion as amended
Yeah.
And seconded on the floor for further debate or for voting as you see fit.
Can I make another suggestion? Sorry. Just like to suggest that we also decide on a date for the ban in all other areas as well, just the fact that, you know, if we were to make this operational change today, meaning it goes into effect tomorrow, we still need to kind of, you know, make the operational changes in order to put that into effect.
How much time are you looking at?
We'd like to suggest a life first to implement so that we have some time to make those changes and figure out what areas we will make those adjustments into.
So you have about 90 days. We're giving you all of the experience to make this motion.
I used to laugh at you guys when I'd sit out in the audience and this kind of thing would happen. I just want to be honest about it. So I understand and my feelings aren't hurt. So 90 days, is that bottom line 90 days or are we talking 45 days? I'm not joking about it because I just, you know, I think the longer we, we, okay, go ahead, I asked you, Nick, so.
He's just tying it into the fiscal budget, I think.
Yeah. Oh, well, that's something new for me, yeah.
That's why
Is that why it is?
That's definitely one of the reasons, it would tie to the fiscal year so that it would allow us to finish out this current year and take care of our current obligations.
it would allow us to finish out this current year and take care of our current obligations, given the budget that we have and then also provide us enough time to make the operational changes to maintain as high of service level measures as we can as we implement the ban.
Okay, so the ban, and you'd have to agree to it, an added amendment would be to begin this ban on July 1st, 2019.
And I'll accept the friendly motion change.
Any comments or questions by council, yes, Councilwoman Hearst?
Well, I'd just like to put this to bed because I've got to get up early in the morning and start pulling my weeds, you know, I think we're kind of treading on this philosophical issue here and making sausage out of this instead of really, you know, identifying the cost of the new methodologies and such, I'm not in favor of herbicides or pesticides misuse or anything else, but I know that there's going to be a cost to this to the taxpayers and I think the taxpayers ought to have some kind of disclosure and I'm hoping that'll, you know, I don't, it's not part of the motion, but I think if we're going to go down this road and change policies, that we need to fully acknowledge whatever it's going to cost.
So Councilmember Hearst, I do want to speak to that because I want to be very transparent about the changes and the potential impacts, there will be a cost impact to this, we don't, as you've heard tonight, we don't have definitive numbers on that yet and we will develop those based on the council's direction tonight as we come forward with the budget, I can tell you though, that the ban will result in a decrease in service levels, so that's to be expected, I think the council understands that tonight and as part of that, any conversations or considerations the council's making about increasing funding to this division to be able to offset the impact of eliminating Roundup, will likely have to be done in ways where we're reducing services in other parts of the department because we have a limited budget, as you all know, and so I think it's important for the council and the community to understand that as well, so there will be some tough decisions ahead in terms of where those resources are coming from and what impacts that has on our operation.
Which is, I think, why coming back to us maybe as part of the explanation of your budget, where you're going with this and, and I think also, you know, these, the alternatives with all of those different subdivisions where we're taxing them and it's covering their landscape costs, we're going to need to know what the mouth is because we're approving it now for the next year, so that's going to be a year out before you're going to be able to offset some of the expense from those locations that you're doing an alternative abatement program.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the motion, so we have a motion made by Councilwoman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez on a ban of gly, gly, I can never say, slowly, parks, trails, medians and on the airport once the second runway work has been completed.
I think we said June 30th.
That'd be the second one, right?
July 1st. July 1st.
July 1st, okay. Let me clarify, I better state it a different way, a citywide ban with the exception of the airport effective July 1st with the airport effective date being at the completion of the runway projects.
All right, Ms. City Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Captain Gomez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes. Thank you, Nick, Ben, for all your work, really appreciate it, I want to thank members of the community for being here with us until 11:00 and we appreciate your efforts on this issue as well and because of the hour, I think we may push item 11A to the next city council meeting and I apologize to Maria Esther, I know you, you're here with us until 11:00 and we're sorry.
We could have gone home two hours ago.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, I hope that the public will be waiting and watching and helping us in any way they can and we're looking for that army of weed pullers.
You know, you know.
Hope to see them right away.
You know, Lo, this is a good opportunity to push Measure G and open up that.
Okay, thank you all for your, your comments and your efforts and your ideas on that, we'll move on to item 12, emergency items added to the agenda as there were none, we'll move on to item 13, requests and scheduling of future agenda items, are there any, Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes, can we take a look at the, there are some rules that the county's putting together regarding some of the biodegradable options, I can share this with staff to see if there's any law changes and if there are law changes regarding the plastic and the non-biodegradable products, whether we're going to implement any of these or if so how, so I'm going to leave these with staff to see about, maybe getting back to us on what our plans are for this.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilwoman Garcia?
Is this for future items?
Yes.
Okay, yes, we've been talking, before you all leave, I'd like you to hear my request, if you can, if you, I'm going to make a request about pesticides, okay, so we've been talking about pesticide management, I would like to request a resolution to support Senate Bill 458 by Senator Maria Elena Durazo to quote, "protect children from brain damaging chlor- chlor- let me spell it, C-H-L-O-R-P-Y-R-I-F-O-S Act of 2019."
Thank you, any other future items to be considered for agenda items, seeing none, move on to item 14, adjournment, thank you everyone for sticking with us and we will see you in two weeks, have a good night.